Going to call a meeting to order. Um, if we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag.
Today of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Thank you.
Which stands one nation.
One God.
Indivisible, liberty, justice.
Uh, Liz, can we do a roll call for attendance, please?
You bet. So this is Liz. Chairman LaRue is going to be absent at this meeting. So Vice Chairman Npemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport? And just so everybody is also aware, Member Spahoe will be absent as well.
Okay.
Yep, and happy birthday to all my members.
Joe, may I say one further thing, please?
Sure, go ahead, Paul.
I, I, I want to express, I'm sure, on behalf of all of the board, uh, uh, feelings for our Chairman Barbara LaRue. I understand that the reason she's not here this evening is that her dad passed away. So I'm sure we all want to express our condolences.
Absolutely. I thank you, Paul.
Yes, thanks, Paul.
That's, uh, I, 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 I express mine as well. And she, her families and our thoughts and prayers.
Yeah.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. Um, okay, so the, uh, the town of Burlington will be holding the January 7th, 2021 Planning Board as a virtual slash electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the Governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20.
So the meeting is, uh, held via Cisco WebEx and is accessible as follows. The link is also available on the Planning Board website and on the posted agenda on the town calendar. If you're looking for it, um, the meeting number is 179-137-0180, meeting password 2020. You can join by phone, 617-315-0704. It's also being broadcast on BCAT, Government Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx phone, Facebook Live, WebEx chat, and at email at planning@berlinon.org during the meeting. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. If you have any questions regarding participation during the meeting, you can call Planning Staff at 781-270-1645, or email us at planning@berlinon.org, and all votes will be taken by a roll call vote.
Great. Thank you, Kristen. Uh, continuances? We have, um...
Yep, so this is, uh, Bill, motion to take item A out of order?
Second.
Roll call, Vice Chairman Npemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so the, uh, item 8A is the continued discussion on the application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan for 4 and 5 Redmond Street. Murray Hills Incorporated is the applicant. We have a motion?
Sure, Joe. Most continue to the Planning Board meeting of February 18th.
Second. Second.
Requested by the applicant in a letter dated January 7th, 2021.
Vice Chairman Npemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, next item, too, is citizens' time. Uh, anyone wishing to speak on any item that is not on our current agenda must identify themselves prior to doing so. Is there anybody out there who would like to speak? We see anybody out there, Jen, or anybody, uh? Nope?
I'm seeing no one, Joe.
Okay, great. Next item is announcements on the three.
Sure, so this is Liz. Um, um, so zoning bylaw review committee, um, is happening on the 13th, January 13th, at 6:30 PM via Zoom. Um, and the discussion, um, I understand is to include the housekeeping zoning amendment. I'm sure that's on the agenda. Um, Martin Luther King Day is January 18th. All town offices will be closed on that Monday. Um, the Board of Appeals, um, is going to be, um, happening on January 19th at 7:30. Um, they're going to be talking about the Windview Heights 2 Friendly 40B. Um, and then town meeting is on January 25th at 7 o'clock PM via WebEx. Um, does anybody else know, does anybody have any announcements that they would like to make that they think would be, um, the group would be interested in? Okay.
All right, so we'll go on to the next item. Thanks, Liz.
Yeah, no problem, Joe.
Next item is four legal notices of interest. There being none, we'll go to the next item. Uh, nonapprovals, and there being none of those, we're going to go to the next item, which is six administrative matters. So 6A is a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change for 75 Middlesex Turnpike, which is the Burlington Mall. Tesla Inc. is the applicant. Um, do we have, uh, we have the applicant here?
Yeah, Trevor Smith from Tesla is on. Believe we also have, uh, Justin Feldhouse from, uh, Simon from the Burlington Mall on as well.
Okay. Uh, I understand we have, um, a couple of alternative plans here, but I just want to let you know in the outset that we're, there are, there are a couple of members that are missing. And I know that, uh, at least one, and I think both, uh, were very interested in, um, having input in this, uh, in this item. So I won't be calling for a vote tonight. Uh, just to let you know upfront. Okay?
Um, okay, um, well, I hope everyone had a great, uh, you know, Happy New Year to everyone. Thanks for your time. Um, I think we submitted, uh, a revised, uh, drawing set, uh, based on feedback from our first meeting, uh, in early December. Um, uh, just to kind of recap, um, looking to install 12, uh, Tesla supercharger stations, uh, at the Burlington Mall. Um, we relocated the equipment, so they were further, so it's further away from, uh, the drive aisle entrance. We also added an enclosure, um, to help, uh, hide and, and block, uh, that auxiliary equipment as well. Um, and we provided, uh, some photoset to kind of help show that, uh, paint the picture a little bit, um, as well. But, uh, what you see in front of you now, uh, that I believe Brady's sharing, is we have, uh, two options. Uh, the photo sim, uh, the photo sims, uh, show the top option. Um, but essentially, we have two options, one, uh, with the charge post running parallel, uh, to the mall road. Um, based on the feedback from our last meeting, um, and we had looked at the Lynnfield Supercharger just up the road. Um, it was our opinion that the board overwhelmingly viewed that station as, as far superior than our initial design, uh, that we had submitted. And so this one, uh, really, uh, replicates that exact layout and design. Like it has a, a nice clean look, uh, with the, uh, charge post really isolated, uh, from the equipment, uh, and the equipment kind of tucked behind it, um, even further hidden. Um, the other option we have, uh, is a, kind of a, a, a back end, what we would call like wishbone, uh, fishbone, uh, design. Um, the, all the posts are just south of the proposed equipment area, uh, and they would be in, in the center line in between the, uh, back-to-back spaces that you see there, um, all, all in, uh, in a row. Um, Brady, not sure if you want to share the, uh, photo sims, just to, uh, give a, a better, uh, picture. Great. Yeah, so this is the, um, option with the stalls running parallel to the mall road. Um, to reiterate, uh, uh, in both options, uh, the, uh, equipment enclosure that you can see there, uh, it remains in the exact location. So it's two drive aisles, uh, further away from, uh, the drive aisle entrance. Uh, so, uh, took it even a step further than I think the, the guidance from the last meeting and, and shifted it over, not just, you know, one drive aisle, but two, uh, to, to tuck it into, uh, the main parking area and away from kind of that drive entrance. Um, and there's a few other angles that, um, help show, uh, you know, kind of the full context, uh, of the enclosure and of those charge posts. Um, but with that, yeah, I'd, I'd love to, uh, open it up for, for feedback and, and questions. Unless, Justin, if you had, um, anything you wanted to, uh, to mention?
Nothing from me, Trevor. We'll, we'll wait for questions.
Can I just clarify with the, with the plan and the, um, the simulations? On the last simulation, it looks like you had the vegetation toward the drive aisle, not Burlington Mall Road. But on the plan set, it looks like you had additional vegetation on the Burlington Mall roadside of the fenced enclosure? Just clarifying which one was which.
Um, yeah, so we would have to go back to the, the plan set. Um, you can do that, Brady. I can also pull it up on the, on the side here. So on our plans, we do show, um, uh, added vegetation in that newly formed, uh, landscapes area or equipment area, um, uh, between the mall road and the enclosure. That's correct.
Okay. And on some of the sims, it looked like it was closer to the transformer, but I, I'll, I, I have more comments, but I'll wait to for people to jump in. Um, Joe, do you want, um, Brady to read some of the departmental comments at this time before we go into, ask the board? Brady, why don't you go ahead and read?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was, I was muted. Uh, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. And Joe, can you speak, can you speak up just a little bit? We're just, you're a little soft. Okay.
Yep. Uh, is that better?
Yep.
Okay. Yep, Brady, you can, uh, do the comments. That would be, that would be good to get the department comments first.
Absolutely. Just one second, Joe, while I examine out the plan.
Sorry, we have to do ten things at once.
So we do have initial comments, um, from the building department. Um, I know that Tesla has worked with the building department to alleviate some of these issues. Uh, but the latest comment that was from, uh, January 5th is that additional ballards should be installed around the perimeter of the equipment enclosure. Um, and then the individual charging station units about having signage on them. Um, and freestanding signs within the BG or general business district are not permitting, are permitted in the zoning district. Um, so those are the latest comments from the building department. Engineering, uh, has no comments. Um, and that's actually really the only comments that we have from other departments at this time.
Okay, thanks, Brady. I'm going to open it up now to comments from the board, if that's, if that's okay. Um, I'm going to start with Paul.
All right. Just one question that I had. I believe most of this use is going to come from people coming down Route 3 in the 95 intersection around, onto the mall road and then taking a right in. And in order to get to the station, do they go all the way down to the intersection and then turn around and come back? Is that how they're going to access this, this area?
Um, it will all depend on the given traffic flow and, and what the navigation tells them in, in the current time. Um, so they could take one or, or the other. Um, there's not a predetermined route that everyone will, will be taking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Uh, Ernie?
Uh, yes, thanks, uh, Joe. Uh, could I, could I just ask Brady to read the comment from the, uh, building inspector that referred to signs on the, uh, charging apparatus? Again, I didn't quite get that.
Certainly, Ernie. Um, so the comment is the individual charging station units have signage on it. These would be freestanding signs. Freestanding signs are not permitted in the zoning district, which the mall location, um, is zone BG.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought, that's what I thought you said, but I, I wasn't sure. Uh, okay, my, my other comment is, uh, I, I don't really think I'd like to see the charging stations themselves right along the mall road. Uh, I think you had a, a second iteration where they're actually sitting in that parking lot, which is better, but not ideal. Um, so out of, out of your two proposed scenarios, I, I think the one inside the parking lot is the one that I would prefer. Um, and my second question, which I raised before, uh, I understand that these are strictly for Tesla cars and, and I do understand that. Uh, I mean, I'm sure in the future we'll have just generic charging stations all over the place, but we don't yet. Uh, and I guess this is a question more for Justin than for Tesla. And that is, um, since we have 12 Tesla charging stations here, could we add a few more generic ones, uh, on the end? So that, uh, we wouldn't have people, especially if we're not going to have signage here, we wouldn't have, uh, people pulling up to the Tesla charging stations and then realizing that, uh, that they needed a special adapter or whatever. Um, is that possible, Justin?
Well, I think we're certainly open to it. We do have other, uh, universal charging stations, or if you want to use the term "universal", you know, Tesla is, uh, unique. Um, but if we had interest from our other vendors to add location here at the end of that, that's something we would entertain.
You would, you wouldn't have a problem, uh, putting generic ones in here then if, if, uh, if one of the other vendors decided or requested it. Okay. Um,
Correct. Yeah, just to, to comment on that point as well, as Trevor from Tesla. Um, so there are already, uh, universal, quote-unquote, "universal" charging stations on the property, um, to fulfill the 30% market share that isn't, uh, Tesla EVs. Um, so really what you have here is, uh, an opportunity, and what the Tesla superchargers are looking to fulfill is, is kind of that gap in service right now. So, um, Tesla makes up 72% of the EV market share. Um, uh, this is a proprietary network, um, but similar to a gas station. Um, there's not one, uh, nozzle, uh, that, uh, can accommodate every single, uh, vehicle, gas car vehicle on the road. But I do grant you your point of, uh, usually the pump can, can accommodate, uh, the mall. But, um, you, as a Tesla, as a Tesla owner, you would have to purchase a $400 adapter to actually use the, uh, and why we use that kind of quote-unquote "universal" charging stations, um, which less than 2% of Tesla owners have actually ever purchased. Um, so i- in a way, the, the stations you currently have there now are excluding, you know, 70-plus percent, uh, of the EV market drivers. What, what this station brings to the property is an opportunity to accommodate every single electric vehicle, um, that, that is out there on the road. So really making, uh, um, an amenity that, that is for all, uh, electric vehicles, or Simon creating an amenity, um, and an experience for, for all electric vehicles, not just, um, everyone but Tesla.
Right. But in the, in this particular location, we're proposing this, I think this is only be Tesla. But what I'm, uh, I know Tesla probably has a, a huge portion of the market right now, but in the coming years, I'm sure that that is going to even out. I mean, with, uh, everybody else starting to, or looking forward to producing electric vehicles. Um, so I was just, uh, wondering if we could add at least a few generic, uh, to this, to this row? So that, uh, I, I'm picturing this as a gas station and, uh, kind of. And really, if it was a gas station, it definitely wouldn't go where it's going right here. Uh, so this is, this is kind of the trial balloon that we're, we're floating up there. This is, uh, a good number of them. I think you said 12 stations here. Uh, and if we were to add a few generic ones, then, uh, people wouldn't have to, uh, show up here and realize that they couldn't because it was Tesla, uh, power their, uh, other EV, uh, or fuel their EV vehicles. That's, that's just my, uh, comment right now. Thank you. I'm all set, Joe.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Ernie. Um, and let's see, uh, uh, Bill?
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, Chairman Joe. Uh, this is Bill here. Um, I, I would agree 100% with Ernie on a number of, uh, issues. I think when we talked last time, there were a number of members that said that's not the right place for it, and it belongs in the back corner, where I believe, uh, the, the mall is parking buses now. Um, you know, again, we, you should probably talk about that with, with the mall separately about their, their plan, and, and every time they're updating parking for something different, should, should advise us on that because that's going to impact, this is a total. But I agree, uh, with Member Cavino that this is not the place for an electric, uh, vehicle gas station. I happen to have probably more information than the rest of you have with regard to, uh, forward-looking, uh, other competitors to Tesla in the electric vehicle market. Um, and there are quite a few of them out there, like Ernie is, is suggesting, and, and that, that's absolutely the case, and for, for names that you'll recognize soon, I would imagine. Um, and so that being the case, they may have their own proprietary, uh, charging stations as well. So, uh, like I think what, uh, Member Cavino mentioned, uh, I don't think we're going to be looking for multiple areas or multiple charging gas stations around either the Burlington Mall or other places, and we should deal with it like that. Uh, the more, uh, Cavino talked, the more I was thinking that with the existing, uh, charging stations we have in the mall, plus this Tesla one, we really should have, uh, just one place in the mall where they're all going to be like a gas station. I think that Ms. Ms. Hughes is going to come up with in a little bit, and, and a great point that she made in her, uh, her letter there, that I didn't, I didn't recognize. And, uh, uh, so, yeah, the places that I've seen the supercharger stations when I traveled out, the opportunity before COVID, uh, because I travel out to Silicon Valley quite a bit, uh, they're, they're not on a road that you can actually see it like you'd see here in the mall. Uh, they're actually, they're, they're back off and they're, they're well landscaped. They're very well landscaped. So you can't even really see them. So this is a bit different than what you'd normally see, uh, particularly in Silicon Valley. So, uh, again, I would be in favor of, let's look at maybe the third option that we mentioned last time, to put it in the corner. Um, as maybe another option there for your option one, which I think you showed the photo sim for the option two. Let's take a look at that photo, uh, the option one photo sim, and see what we can do, put even landscaping around, uh, you know, the fencing where the, uh, facilities are going to be, and try to see if we can put some, uh, softer, uh, facilities there. But again, I would be a fan of, let's put it somewhere else, uh, on the mall property and think of, again, what, what, what plan is, as we got elected to do, and that's what our jobs are, to think a little longer term and think about, uh, the opportunity to consolidate the existing zone we have in the mall, as well as this one, and then you have a, basically a charging station area, uh, for Tesla, for the other main vehicles that we have. And in the future, and again, and I'm going to tell you in the near future, you're going to have other car manufacturers that are fully electric that are going to need either the Tesla, uh, option, or they're going to do another option, or a third option. So there's going to be, uh, that coming up. Uh, I would ask Brady on, uh, to pull up the photo sim of option two again, uh, and kind of talk about this, the signage a little bit. So I think what the, uh, the plan, the billing department says that each one of the, uh, charging stations has a little Tesla on it, uh, little Tesla sign. So that's kind of signage there that tells you it's only Tesla. It looked like there was a, an, an additional little archway thing there that showed on the photo sim. Right. No, put the one up a little bit. To go page up, not page down. Yep. Keep on going. Keep on going. Keep on going. Right there, stop. Yep. Whoops. Yeah, so you have the charges along the side. The, the single kind of Tesla Archie thing there, what, is that a charger as well?
Yeah, so you brought up a lot of points, and I'd love to address them, but for, for this specific one, yeah, that's a, that's just a Tesla charge post. Um, what we like to do is create, uh, an opportunity for owners, uh, to be able to pull in. Um, granted, the cars these days kind of back themselves into the spots on their own, but, um, not everyone's comfortable, uh, backing into a parking space. So, uh, when possible, we always love to, um, provide, um, our owners with the ability for what we call a pull-in, a pull-through space.
Ah, okay. Yeah, thanks. Uh, yeah, so I, I think there's a couple of things that you need to, you addressed it, you know, how, how do you take this, the logos off all of your, your, uh, your charging stations? Because then you've got, you know, 12 signs there, uh, right along Middlesex Turnpike. So again, maybe there's an opportunity, but if you throw it in the back, um, you know, the back corner, that, that you might get a little ways. And again, uh, if you look at where the, the equipment is, um, you know, you, you put some foliage around that, too.
Yeah, we're a little bit pigeonholed in terms of how much landscaping. Uh, we can certainly put it around the enclosure, but that transformer that's in there, there's, uh, certain setbacks and restrictions, uh, associated with it. Um, that enclosure kind of, uh, prevents us also from adding additional landscaping because it already takes up some room. So, um, we would have more room if we removed the enclosure and, and just added, uh, additional landscaping. That's more commonplace, actually, in, in California and commonplace across the country. We traditionally don't enclose the equip, equipment and just have a, a landscaped, um, uh, buffer. Um, so if, if that's the preference, we're, we're happy to go that route. Um, but if we have to, uh, keep the enclosure, um, there's just, um, not a ton of, uh, additional room, uh, between then the, uh, the pavement and, um, and that enclosure and the setbacks and clearances of, of the transformer.
Yeah, I think in, in California, because of the weather there, they don't have the foliage drop like we do. So when it's their natural foliage, it, 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 the leaves don't drop. So that's why we'd probably, you could look for both. Uh, and I think where you're going to, uh, uh, get some ad, additional property, if you take this and you actually put it in the corner, where I think, uh, a, a number of the members are thinking about, against, not off Middlesex Turnpike, but you can put it behind the O.C.A.'s building up in that corner where all the buses are, right against the hill. So you won't see, seeing it from Middlesex Turnpike from the top. And, uh, you can come in from the mall road and come in that way and ride around. Very convenient access, but not quite in your face for this, uh, this charging station.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, you know, I think you're bringing up a, a great point in, in terms of, um, uh, prior, you know, with the equipment, we're, we're trying to mask it. Um, we, we chose this area of the property, uh, because there are, and, and Justin can speak more to this, but there are restrictions, um, uh, all across the property. This is really the, the only area we can go in, in this side parking lot, um, or front parking lot, depending on which way you're entering the mall. There's, uh, multiple entrances. Um, but we, you know, we view this also as a good opportunity. I think one of, it seems like, uh, the common, a common theme, and correct me if I'm wrong, common theme is certainly supportive over this, uh, technology and renewable energy, emission-free driving. Um, one of the barriers to entry is the lack of public awareness and, and knowledge. Um, people not understanding that there is actually charging infrastructure out there, and they have to do their own investigation and research. You can see we don't have a canopy like you see at a gas station, and we don't have a monument sign like you see at a gas station. Um, I think this visibility, uh, would be great for just overall public awareness that EV infrastructure is out there. I think the, uh, charging infrastructure that's currently at the mall is, is in a pretty visible, uh, location, right at the kind of main entrances, uh, as you go in. Um, and just a, a quick point on, on kind of the ga, the gas station analogy, there's, um, a big fundamental difference with, you know, a gas station and, and a DC fast charging station in just the dwell time. So, um, you know, owners aren't leaving their car, you know, swiping, uh, their credit card, um, and holding their hand on, on the charging cable and then getting back in and, and driving by. It's more of a, um, experience, uh, uh, that, uh, is, you know, 30 to 60 minutes. So you're plugging in your car and you're walking around, uh, as if you're another patron, uh, as if you're another customer on... So you're plugging in your car and you're walking around uh as if you're another patron, uh, as if you're another customer on site. So um, having them centrally located as their own facility, as was talked about it, it, it really, the goal of charging, at least in our eyes, is to make it ubiquitous. Um, as people are coming in uh to uh, to the shopping plaza, you know, having it in different locations, they could be wanting to go to different stores. So it's even a, a more, you know, they're, the primary reason they're going to that development is, is not uh just a supercharge, but it's also the patron um and shop at the amenities that are around. So having the different options helps, you know, kind of build and elevate that customer experience that I know work very cognizant over. And, and you know, Justin certainly even probably more so is.
Thank you. So I, yeah, I could think my, my point on uh adding this as a generic uh with, with Ernie mentioned, uh, the Tesla plus generic. And again, putting it somewhere else uh in the corner in the back, it's going to be an easy off and easy on for, for your folks there. It's going to be access, it's still going to get access to the village. Uh, so it's going to be access. We're not putting you in the corner, the back corner past Jordan Marsh near the Vinebrook. So it's not like we're sending you way out there. We're just sending you right around the corner. But uh, my point here is that uh to, to relocate the existing charging station. So that's been um, you haven't been part of these conversations, but it's a real sticking point because the charging stations are where there's really, really tight parking for the mall is. So if the opportunity here is that we're going to put a charging station and I'm not going to call it a Tesla station or and the other companies that I'm not going to mention because they're your direct competitors. But as they come up in the next year or two or three, that um, you, you put the, the generic ones in, in with the Tesla ones. And then you have an opportunity to kind of put that into an area where there's not tight parking spaces and remove the existing ones and relocate them to like, like I said, a, a gas area type of one. So when you come in, you don't have to guess it's the Tesla one because it's a Tesla one plus it's the generic one. Plus it's company X, Y, and Z uh that you're going to be seeing and they may have their own proprietary charging uh adapters. Or maybe an opportunity that you, you actually uh, you spend the money and you have a one or two or three generic adapters for the Teslas for the other ones. I know you talked last time that the charging's uh timing's different, uh, but that, that eliminates you to have a separate Tesla charging station. And again, your competitors may, may not, you may know more about the particular of the adapters that they do. Whether they're going to be proprietary for your upcoming competitors, but uh, you know, then they eliminate having the Tesla one and, and three or four other companies. In addition to the, the main big three that would have uh adapters for the generics. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Good comments. Um, Brenda?
Sure. Uh, you know, you had mentioned a couple of times, you said this is the only place you can go. Is there a reason why? You know, I understand the desire. I just, you know, what other areas did you actually research?
Well, we looked through the entire property when we were approached by Tesla as the possible location. We had to consider ownership of land. I think everybody knows that Macy's owns a large portion of the land and so we were restricted by that. We've leased restrictions and no build zones with anchors uh and some other exterior facing tenants. And then we also had to consider future development potential of certain areas. And then of course logistics of operating the property, uh, for instance, that area that the board continues to reference uh where we store snow. And unfortunately, it's just not uh a conducive area to this type of use because of that.
It's not conducive because that's where you put snow? I, I'm sorry. I, I misunderstood. Could you clarify that for me?
We store snow during this period of time. And so we're not able to put these chargers there and they won't be accessible at all times of the year.
Got it. Um, you know, taking a look at, at the different options, um, I, I couldn't be supportive of option two. I think it's too invasive to um in a six turnpike. And here, I, I have to believe there's another place you can put snow. Um, I, you know, if, if I, if I were to vote positively, uh, option one would be uh the preferred option. But I, I think that we could get a little bit more creative on, on the location. And you know, to, to Member Gaffney's point, you know, we have to be looking long term and not just here in kind of the immediate need. I'd also, if we were to, e- even if we were to approve option one, I would, I'd still want the same vegetation planted along Middlesex Turnpike. Um, I, I just, you know, I know you don't consider this a gas station, but for all intents and purposes, it's, it serves the same concept of, you know, fueling, you know, fueling your vehicle. And I just, I, I think it's, it's not something I want to see right on Middlesex Turnpike. You know, I think that when people buy uh an electric car, they're going to learn the ins and outs. I, I don't really think the average day to day person who's driving, you know, a, a gas fueled vehicle needs to see it so that they can learn, you know, so they can learn about electric cars. I think, you know, if they want to and there's that actual desire, they will rather than having the Tesla product in their face. I do like the enclosure. I, I think that that's a step up. Um, but I, again, I, I still think we can do better. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah. And just to comment quickly, I, I think, you know, we are looking long term and, and big picture at this, I think, which is why we've uh, haven't located and proposed to locate, you know, right in front of the store entrance. Uh, cause we know that's not really conducive to long-term operations and even near-term operations for, for the type of utilization that, that we see at our stations uh as well as the, um, the size of, of the station itself. So um, yeah, I, I, just to kind of comment as well, like 80% of people's charging is, is done at home. So I think just we have to kind of, it's a complete paradigm shift in looking at charging and, and gas stations. It's, it's more amenity driven for, for the property, but um, you know, happy to, you know, take that um aesthetic feedback and uh appreciate the comments.
Hey, Joe, I just had one more question if I can. Yeah, and it'd be for staff because again, if, if we have option one and option two and option three hasn't been provided to us, or I don't know if it will be uh in a different area or if it's impossible. Maybe to staff is if you could uh provide me with uh what options I would have uh not to approve this. Because it doesn't say that we're on a minor engineering change, which is in my opinion, this is not a minor engineering change. This is a big deal. And again, how we define that, I remember when I first came on the board, we were defining minor engineering changes. So it could be easier, but this is, this is a big deal. This is, this is something that fundamentally changes. And I think like the applicant said, you know, this is, this is something new. We don't really have a strategy or a plan for it, you know? So now we're, we're, we're backpedaling here and saying, well, we get one or two options. I'm not sure we do. To hear from planning on what, what my third or fourth option is with regard to, you know, let's, let's give it some breathing time. Let's get a strategy for this and then provide maybe the mall or maybe have an overall strategy. Let's, let's talk about maybe master plan, right, for electric charging vehicle stations, which is not going to be the only one that we're going to have because of where we're located. Thank you, Joe.
This is Kristen. Uh, if I can just clarify a couple of things. So la, the first plan we saw last meeting was with the equipment along the entrance drive and the charging stations in the drive aisle, the first one over. This, this iteration is kind of a option A, option B, where the, the, there's a new island with an enclosed equipment. And kind of two A is with the chargers along Burlington Mall Road. And two B is placing them behind the new um enclosed area of the equipment in that drive aisle. So with, so Brenda, for what you were talking about option one and two, are we talking about one and two from today's meeting? Not last meeting where they were on the drive aisle?
Yes, yes.
So you would prefer, prefer pulling them away from Burlington Mall Road?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I just want to clarify that. And then to Bill's comment, um, as well as to Justin's um comments. I know many of you that have been in discussions with um the mall for many, many years. And you know, I, I, I have come to appreciate the mountain and layers of legal paperwork that is involved in the mall. And I actually think I said to Justin today, um, when we looked at Northwest Park, it was like, where could we infiltrate? And it was, you know, here's bedrock, here's high groundwater, here's, you know, good areas of infiltration. So it's really kind of mapping out where possibilities are that weren't necessarily driven by zoning or dimension requirements. So um, you know, I, I asked, um, when I checked with Justin today to see if, to make sure he was on his calls to discuss to kind of help us un, under, not, help us understand a little bit more of the reason why they were wanting this location. I know in the triangle, I mean, obviously Macy's property is Macy's property, the triangle in the back was, I think, continues to be problematic. And um, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, you still need to do the easement to the transformer from the public way, which I think is a little tricky on that end of the parking lot. Um, but you know, I'm, I don't want to speak for you by any means. Um, and then in terms of Bill's comment of, you know, options to, you know, uh, options for approval denial, we can certainly walk through that for the next meeting. I don't have, um, other than article nine, um, where we have to find um approvals in the site plan, which we could share tonight, but I think it'd be more beneficial to just um point you to the directions in the bylaw for the next meeting.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Kristen. Yeah, I, I think with uh Member Rappaport, uh, when she was asking about that corner where they put all the snow. Yeah, I would, I would also, you know, say, you know, with regard to where you, you can't use that because that's where you put snow today. And that's where you put snow for the last, uh, you know, you know, ever since the mall's been there pretty much, it's been no man's land there. And that'd be a perfect spot for this. And again, you've got no man's land down near the brook and things like that. You've got tons of spaces where the Macy's parking lot is where you could put snow over there. So that's, so there's, you know, again, that, that's the reason why you can't put it there and you need, you need uh, you know, a certain clearance to get through. I, I, I would say maybe you can kind of take another look at that because I haven't, that argument I haven't bought yet. Thank you.
Sure. Now, if I can just respond to Bill there.
Mr. Chairman.
Anything, is it, is it new or is this, is this going to be the same?
So Ernie, Ernie's looking, sorry, Joe, Ernie's looking to make a comment and then Justin Feldhouse is looking to respond.
Just, just uh, Mr. Chairman, just one thing that, that occurred to me when, when Bill, one of Bill's questions was answered. And that is that uh, unlike a gas station, your, your car is going to sit there for 45 minutes, an hour on the charge station. And, and one of the things that I think is bothering all of us is uh, we've got these 12 items in this huge transformer sitting all in one place. Would it not be better to scatter around the charging stations? I understand it would be more expensive. Uh, so I'm, I'm not going to even look at the money situation at the moment. I know that, that the gauge of the wire would probably have to be very, very much larger if you only had one transformer. Uh, but if you scattered these things around, um, then it would be, and made them closer to the stores. People would be more likely to go in the store and shop. And I think that's what the mall's looking for than sit in their car and they read their iPad while, while their car was charging. Does that make any sense? I know it's, it might be in a completely different direction. In other words, a, a pair of Tesla charging stations and a, a generic one here and, and then another you know, a hundred yards away, another one, another setup like that. This does, is that for, I know it might be cost prohibitive, but other than the cost, is there any reason you couldn't do that? Uh, Trevor?
Well, it's hard to say other than the cost. Is there any reason? Cause uh, we just wouldn't, because of the cost, we wouldn't even entertain that. It would be like building uh two stations if we were going in two locations or, you know, three stations if, if we're going in three low state, the three locations. So um, there is a uh technical limitation to how far away uh our charge post can be from the equipment. So we couldn't have, you know, the charge post tucked behind, you know, one corner of the building or excuse me, the equipment tucked behind one corner of the building and, and the charge post, you know, pushed out or, or isolated. Uh, there is about a 200 foot uh limit to how far away we can be from, from our equipment. And I, I, I think it's, it's certainly a balance that we're always trying to um, uh, you know, navigate in terms of the customer experience and uh, and incentivizing people uh to get out of their cars. I, I think, you know, if we push everyone to the back corner uh of the property, uh, first, this requires a pretty sizable service. It's like setting up a new uh pad Starbucks out in the back there. I, we don't even know uh service is available. It's one of the also benefits of this location. It's not like it's a, a very close shot uh to the manhole. Um, and certainly further away with us shifting over the equipment. But it's, but it's feasible uh to an extent. But uh, as you can see with our location, we like to be more towards the perimeter. And I'm sure uh, well, the gentleman saw in California, they are typically more towards the perimeter away from the storefronts because we don't want to incentivize non-electric vehicle owners parking in these stalls like I'm sure they do. And like I've seen on, on some of the uh EV um charging forums uh about the current ones, because they're just too prime of parking. People are, you know, uh, ask for, for, you know, ask for forgiveness later um and, and parking there and, and blocking someone out of being able to use that stall. So I think this, for us, this was a, a great, you know, all things considered from redevelopment, from, you know, parcel ownership, et cetera. Uh, this was a great opportunity to be close to a few amenities with the um Cafe Nero there as, as well as the, the main mall. And, and close to power uh and still far enough away that uh we're not running the risk of, of taking prime parking spaces, but really uh elevating those spaces, uh encouraging other space to be heavily utilized.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop. Um, cause I think we're starting to hear the same stuff over and over. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, at the, you know, the uh, uh, for the purposes of moving this along, uh, because we're not going to take a vote tonight. We're going to have another opportunity to discuss, discuss it next, next meeting. I'm just going to give a quick comment because I think I've heard from everyone on the board at this point that for the most part, we don't like this location. And I think, I think we're, I think the fact is Tesla likes this location because it's visible. And they're going to be able to get some visibility out of it, you know, on the, on, from the roadway. They're going to be able to see Tesla, Tesla, Tesla. And I think that's the same reason why, you know, a lot of these banks want brick and mortars in the centers of town because they want to be able to put a sign on there and everyone get to see it. So I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, there's, there's a lot of locations on that lot that, that you could store uh snow. You're currently storing snow in parking spots. So there are parking spots on the other side of the mall completely that don't get used uh on the other outskirts of the mall. I'm not sure we have, you know, we had a big snowstorm while we were parking buses there. Was the, was the snow, what, what was there? The buses or the snow? Cause if the buses, if the bus area, the, the area where the buses is where you put the snow, where did you put the buses when the snow was there?
We only have a few areas on the property where we are able to store snow as per an approved plan with the town. I believe that came through the planning board and most likely the conservation committee. And the vast majority of s- snow that is allowed to be stored on this property has to get picked up from close to the mall entrances um and to those other lots and brought to that storage area. All of it is required to be stored on top of asphalt. It's not allowed to be put in the landscaping. Uh, that's all been dictated to us.
Right. But there's, I mean, there's a big pocket, the big pocket area. I'm not, I'm not going to be labor. I'm just going to, what my, I guess my point is, I'd like to move on uh to see if there's anybody out there in the public that would have, have some comments on this. And it, you know, again, I'm not trying to stop conversation here because we will have another opportunity to address this at the next meeting. So um, is there anybody out in the uh, in the watching audience that uh would like to comment on the?
Joe, I see Betsy Hughes would like to say something.
Okay. Go ahead, Betsy.
Betsy, we can't hear, at least I can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
Is she muted? Betsy? Are you there?
Yeah, she's not muted. I'm not sure why we can't hear you.
I, I'm unmuted.
I can hear you now.
Okay, I feel like that, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Um, anyhow, uh, first, thank you, um, for allowing me to, uh, speak. I, as I said, I, um, I sent a letter to the planning board with, uh, concerns about this project. I don't want to, uh, you, you have a very tight schedule, so I don't want to, um, repeat a lot of things, but I will say that I totally support the encouragement of emission-free vehicles. Um, but I am also one who feels that these larger-scale charging stations are just twentieth-century versions of, of fueling depot, otherwise known as a gas station. And I think that as this, we're getting new into this area, it would be wise for us to be strategically thinking about where these should go, um, and do we really want to have the entrance to the mall highlight a fuel charging station? Um, I am, I also share the concern about allowing, uh, a single vendor, because as this technology develops, there will be more, um, and, uh, so I think we need to think about that. The, the last point I wanted to make was that I understand and I want to support the mall developer in finding sources of revenue during these difficult times. That said, traveling to Linfield, which I did, to see the charging station at the marketplace, I found their Tesla charging station was tucked away in the back of the shopping area, not visible from any of the walkways or struck, or store, uh, uh, frontage areas or the main street. There were green islands around, there was, uh, a, a lot of landscaping, so it, there should be something more that can be done on that front. Um, it was, it was landscaped and not intrusive, um, which, or as in slightly as what's being proposed here. Um, so in my opinion, if this is approved at all, it should be located appropriately landscaped in an area out of sight, um, to the entrance of the, the mall. Um, and then my last comment was, I, I do think that we, from the mall perspective, it would be great for planning board and, and town meeting and others to have an idea what the strategy is. Um, it feels like this is kind of a piecemeal kind of thing, and I understand this is a difficult time, but, you know, it would be helpful to understand what, what you all are planning so that we can be on board with that and, and work with you to help you, uh, get through all this. So that is my comment. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Betsy. Appreciate that. Those are good comments. Uh, at this point, I, as there, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? If not.
If not, Joe, I'll make a motion, uh, to continue the matters of the planning board meeting of January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
That'd be great. Thanks, Bill.
Second. Vice Chairman in the sunbox.
Yes.
Member Quin Freeman.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. We will go on to the, uh, the next item of appointment, uh, seven B. Is that right? The, um, continued application for approval of site plan, thirty-four Cambridge Street, Five Below Inc. is the applicant. We have the applicant here.
Uh, yes, you do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the record, attorney Mark Vaughn with, uh, Reamer Bronstein. Good evening. Um, I'm not the applicant, but I'm representing the applicant, but the applicant's here with me. Um, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, great.
Everybody, yep.
So, uh, here, here tonight, representing Five Below in connection with the, uh, site plan application that's been, uh, submitted to the board. Uh, with me are a few folks I'll introduce, uh, Chris Chernard, who was with, uh, Five Below, uh, Tim Hayes, who was with Bowler Engineering, uh, civil engineering firm of record for the, the project, and also George Miller, who was, uh, an architect working on behalf of, uh, Five Below. So, um, in the interest of time, I, I won't give a, a lengthy presentation tonight. I, uh, I know we have a long agenda, but, um, we're here in connection with, obviously, the properties Burlington Crossroads, uh, uh, retail center that I know the board knows, uh, quite well. Um, and the specific tenant space that we're talking about here is, um, the former Outback, uh, restaurant, uh, tenant space that the board, um, if you recall, um, approved of several years ago, uh, uh, another restaurant called Burlington Beer Works had been interested in occupying that very same space, but, uh, decided not to go forward. So that space has been vacant for some time. Um, Five Below is, uh, very excited about the opportunity to, to locate and occupy that space. Uh, just by way of background, Five Below is a, uh, is a retailer. Um, they are a, uh, uh, company that's been in existence since two thousand and two. They're headquartered in, uh, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. They have, uh, close to a thousand stores throughout the country, uh, a number of stores here in Massachusetts. I think the most, uh, 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 proximate ones would be in, uh, Saugus and De'Ambras, I believe. But, uh, they are known for providing trendy, high-quality products, um, loved by tweens, teens, and beyond. So I think I would fit into the and beyond, uh, category. But, uh, uh, the name Five Below comes from, uh, you know, they have a number of, uh, uh, products that are offered for five dollars or below, you know, combined with a, a number of other items, uh, as well. So, uh, for this particular location, uh, again, they would occupy that same space that Outback was in, and they are proposing a, uh, a very modest, um, one-thousand-square-foot addition to the back rear of the site. Um, Brady is highlighting that with his, uh, mouse right now. Thank you, Brady. Um, the, um, the space, uh, of, of Outback, it's about seventy-five-hundred square feet, and then there's be a, a thousand-square-foot addition. That thousand-square-feet would not be for retail purposes. It's, uh, really for storage, back of house. I think there's some employee lockers in there, so it would not be for, you know, showroom retail purposes. That, that would be the, 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 the main rectangular portion of the, of the Outback space. Um, so, um, the, uh, parking, uh, we have a goo- good story on parking in that if the board recalls from prior, uh, proposals that were, were before the board for this center, is the parking today is actually non-conforming in the context of being, um, less parking out there than what the bylaw would, uh, require. Uh, and in large part, that's due to, uh, the Outback or, or Beer Works and the number of seats that were going to be in there and the parking demand. So, uh, because retail, uh, generates a mu- much less of a parking requirement than, than restaurant, uh, we would actually be bringing, bringing the, the parking requirement, uh, into compliance with, um, what the, the town has for a minimum and a max. We would right, be right between the minimum and the maximum parking for the overall, uh, center. Uh, so I think that's a, a, a positive. And, uh, the other element of this too, um, Mr. Chairman, is that, uh, and I don't know if Brady, if you might be able to, uh, put the elevation plan on, but we are proposing some, uh, changes to the front elevation of the building. If the board might recall, Outback had kind of like this gabled roof element, uh, large dormer that was befitting of that, there, there we go, be, be, befitting of that Outback, uh, kind of, um, Australian theme, if you would. Uh, that's how it exists today. Um, we would be looking to eliminate that, and the next page actually shows how we would be really trying to bring the front of the building into conformance with the remainder of the center out there in terms of, uh, how it would look. Um, that's on the, yeah, there you go. Um, so you can see that we're, you know, providing a more, um, you know, appropriate entrance that's consistent with what you see elsewhere at, at Burlington, uh, Crossroads. So, um, we have our, our architect here, we have our, uh, civil engineer and, and the client, obviously, here to, to speak to anything. One thing I do want to, uh, mention, and, uh, I know I, I, I see, um, former, uh, board member and a butter, uh, Jack Kelly, that is, uh, I believe, participating tonight. We, we did receive a, a letter, I, I, I know, uh, the season of butter that lives behind the, the property, uh, expressing some concerns just about, uh, some noise issues that have been, uh, uh, happening in the, in the past and present relative to trash pickup, uh, as well as some of the, um, I guess the, the, the rooftop, uh, units that are on some of these, uh, places in terms of just, you know, how they, uh, distribute sound. As it relates to Five Below, I can tell you that, um, today there are, I believe, seven rooftop units that are on that space, uh, just given the fact that it's a, a restaurant and was going to continue to be a restaurant. Uh, they had a number of rooftop, uh, units on there. That would actually be reduced down to three, uh, rooftop units. These are going to be new, um, rooftop units that would be, you know, state-of-the-art, um, units, and, uh, certainly we can speak to the, the sound of them, but, uh, it would be considerably less of, uh, of, of a sound issue, just given the, the modern technology and the sound attenuation that they have built into them. I, I know that, uh, Edens, um, and I believe that his representative of Edens here tonight, the, the property owner, has been communicating directly with Mr. Kelly, um, and, uh, you know, trying to a- address the comments and concerns he has. I, and I think the board has been copied on that, uh, correspondence, but, um, you know, I, I know that Edens is, is committed to, you know, they, they want to be a good neighbor and make sure that there's no issues with the, the residential of butters behind the center there, and, uh, they're committed to that. I think, uh, that's, um, what their, um, um, commitment is. So, um, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to, uh, address any comments or questions that the board might have. Uh, I could have our civil engineer give a more detailed discussion of the, there's really not much to it. It's a, it's a thousand-square-foot addition on the back, so, um, really not a lot of, uh, um, detail that I think we would need to provide, but, but happy to do so.
Um, at this point, I, I'm not sure, uh, is there a rendering of the addition itself? This is the front. We've seen it.
Yeah.
We're looking at the front of it. Do we have a, is there a, a schematic that shows the back? How, how much it's gonna bump out or?
Um, I don't think that there's a rendering of the back, um, but there's a, it, it's, you know, really just going to be a, a box of a, of a bump out that I think is going to mimic the
There you go.
existing exterior that's, that's back there today. Is that, is that correct? Um, I don't know, George or, um?
Correct, that's accurate, yes.
Uh, I'm sorry.
I just, um, 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 my thoughts, I'm just trying to see if we have a rendering to show where, you know, the, where the drive aisle going around versus where the bump out is going to be and what, you know, what we're going to be looking at with that. So, is that, that's the rendering there? So that, the, the front piece is what we're looking at existing now? And then that bump out in the back is thousand-foot.
My property now.
Yeah, it's that, um, it's that small.
Could see it in relation.
Yeah, it's that small box, it says proposed addition. Uh, you can see it, it eats into, um, like four or five parking spaces that are in the back there, but there's considerable distance between that proposed addition and the edge of pavement to the rear there. So to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, we would not be impacting the ability for, um, you know, access around the back there, emergency access or traditional access for, for whatever purpose. It'd still be, I don't know, Tim, um, Hayes, if you have a, an idea, but the, 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 still a considerable distance between that and the edge of pavement, correct?
Yeah, yeah, Mark, you're correct. The, um, the addition sits within an area that's not used today, um, and it, like he said, like Mark said, it needs about four or five parking spaces. Um, it, it does not impact the loading operations or the drive aisles for emergency vehicles or other vehicles access around the back of the mall.
Where is that, where, where is that addition in relation to Marshalls?
It would be, um, I, I believe, yeah, this helps here. So the, the space that we're talking about, about the Outback space, former Outback space is between Marshalls and the, um, AAA space. So this addition would, looks like it would be behind, you know, a portion of the Marshall space, but then connecting into the, the Five Below space.
Well, it's actually behind the Mar- it's behind the Marshalls piece of the building.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up at this point to the, uh, to the board members and see if they have, uh?
Joe, this is Kristen. Would you mind if, uh, we wait in quickly first?
Sure, go ahead, Kristen.
Sure, thanks. Um, so just to, to reiterate, uh, Mark's comments on, this does actually bring the parking into conformance.
Should be down.
Yeah, the area that we wanted to talk about and to, uh, uh, previous member Kelly's comments about, um, sound attenuation, we did, I did talk to Mark quite a bit and, and he talked to Edens about the equipment that exists on the roof right now, and there's a whole bunch of, um, vents and exhausts and some other, and, you know, when did Outback go in? Eighties, early nineties? I'm not sure, but, um, some outdated equipment and, um, verified that there'll be new equipment. Did ask that, um, we understand a little bit more about the cut sheets of that new equipment and the sound attenuation in the units themselves. Um, and I would ask, you know, where are they placed on the roof? Um, just in understanding how that sound bounces back. Um, the back and forth with, um, with Edens and member Kelly did address, um, hours of garbage pickup and, um, some other things, and we want to make sure there's proper signage in the back as to when those activities can occur. And then the other thing I wanted to just, um, reiterate as we do with all multi-tenant plazas is the importance for employee parking management, um, especially in this corner. Um, in this front corner, the perception of their parking is huge. Um, so, uh, really need for Edens and the tenant to be managing employees to parking in the back in those identified employee parking areas. Um, with that, um, you know, I think we're getting to addressing most of the concerns with, um, gaining more information about sound and, um, loading and such, but just wanted to say that before you guys jumped in, so thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kristen. Uh, okay, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna go to Paul. If Paul get any comments there?
No, just, uh, as soon as I saw this plan, I was rea- I'm, I'm reassured that they're, uh, talking with, uh, member Kelly, who's, uh, you know, it's a straight shot from the back of that across the high tension lines to his backyard. So he would be one of, or the person most affected. So I'm, uh, I, I'm, I'm gonna be reassured that he will let us know if he's satisfied with what they're gonna do to attenuate the noise from the parking and/or anything that's going to be on the top of the building, but that's my only comments other than that. Fine.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Uh, Ernie.
Uh, thank you, Joe. Um, I, I was reading the, uh, communications back and forth between, uh, uh, Jack and, uh, Edens, and, uh, I just wanted to make sure, and I'm sure Kristen will do it anyways, that, uh, the things that were agreed to between, uh, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Pransky, I believe it is, from, uh, Edens, uh, were included in our decision, and, uh, um, it, it's good to see this space filled up finally again. And, uh, one other thing in, in, that should be included in our, our decision is, uh, especially since there, there's a, there has been a noise problem back there forever and ever. Uh, the snow pulling contractors are now using big snow melters and they're very, very, very noisy, and I, I'd like to see included in our decision, the, um, provision that the snow melter not be operated behind the building, that it, but it has to be in front of the building. Obviously has to be over a storm drain, but I think that's how they're doing it now. Just want to make sure that they continue doing it that way. But other than that, uh, I, I think I'm all set. Thank you, Matt, Mr. Chair.
Great, thanks, Ernie. Uh, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, the only thing that I, I'm, that, uh, you're removing, I think you said five, uh, parking spaces, and, and I think he, one of the applicants said that, uh, it's not being used, and, and it's not being used because the, the space isn't being used, but the, as, uh, our planning director said, that those spaces are intended for employees. And because if you've ever been in that parking, that, uh, uh, that, that plaza, and, you know, maybe lately it hasn't been that packed, but it actually was pretty, pretty packed during Christmas as well. I've been in there where you couldn't get out of there, uh, because of the parking situation. It was jammed up on Cambridge Street and everybody was just backed up and couldn't even get out of a space. You were there for hours. So I ended up parking myself at the Panera there and having lunch.
and everybody was just backed up and couldn't even get out of a space. You were there for hours. So I ended up parking myself at the Panera there and having lunch. But I, I think the, the parking is still tight there, and the idea is that you're gonna have your employees parked behind there, so if you're taking away the four or five spaces, you know, now you're taking, now they're gonna have to park somewhere else. Um, again, in a very difficult parking area, particularly when everything opens back up again. So what I would ask is, you know, if the applicant says that, that, that the extra thousand square feet, taking away the, the five spaces, is gonna be for storage and for employee lockers, uh, you know, being, uh, a patriot of the Outback many, many times, you know how big that area is. Um, and, uh, I, I guess I'm questioning the, the, the need for the, the addition and to take away those parking spaces. Um, maybe, uh, what I would ask is to say, can you give me square footage of, uh, the other five belows that we have in the area? To see if this is completely out of whack, or, uh, you know, is, is that one thousand square feet, uh, addition in need? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Bill. Um, do we have that inform- do you have that information now, or would you like to get, are they, the applicant, would we be able to get that information?
Uh, sorry, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mark Vaughn, just, I, I was gonna, uh,
Yep.
I don't know if we have the typical square footage information for the, uh, uh, Five Below. I'll let Chris Schunard answer that if he, if he'd like. But just on the parking issue itself, I, I, yeah, we are gonna be, you know, eliminating, I think, either five or six spaces there, Mr. Gaffney, but, you know, I think the visual that's on the screen now does help to show that there is still a, a significant parking field back there behind the building that is available for employee use. That's, uh, to the, the, the left of the screen, at least I'm looking at, that is behind the building there, so that's available for employee parking that, uh, you know, not for customer parking to really make sure that the, 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 the customer parking lot, the main parking field is available for, for customers. And again, um, I know that, um, you know, when the restaurant was there, Outback, it, uh, did generate a, a lot of, uh, activity, uh, I guess, not enough activity for it to have continued in business, but, uh, but in any event, I mean, w- we are gonna be, uh, reducing the parking demand pretty significantly by virtue of going from, you know, a two hundred and something seat restaurant, you know, down to the, just the, the retail store itself, but,
Yeah.
you know, and, you know, the last thing Edens would want
My, my parking issues actually happened when, when Outback was closed, you know what I mean? So it's not, it's, what you're doing is now you're increasing, but I think the requirement that we're gonna have on this is that the employees do park in the back. And now, my guess, the question, the other question you, you may have brought to my attention was, how many employees are there for, for this particular site? But, you know.
Uh, Chris, do you want to, uh?
Sure, def- definitely, of course. Uh, good evening. This is Christopher Schwinard. Uh, to address a couple of the issues, the, typically, there's two employees, two to three employees on, uh, on a typical shift. It fluctuates depending upon the time of day. Uh, we certainly have our busy points in the middle of the day, um, as well as in the evenings, however, but those other times, it's usually just two employees on. Uh, so it's only two employees.
Okay.
In regards to the actual square footage of the building, uh, Five Below's typical store is in the neighborhood of about eighty-five hundred to nine thousand square feet. This particular location, uh, is, which includes the stockroom in the back, about a little over eight thousand two hundred square feet. And based on our standard prototypes, this store is actually a little on the smaller side from that we currently, what we typically, uh, install at other locations. Uh, I'm not familiar with the other sites, uh, that had been mentioned in Massachusetts. Uh, however, uh, I would say this is really what we would consider on the, the smaller side of a Five Below store.
Okay, thank you. Can, can you get the data for me for the Massachusetts stores and, and next, um, year?
Uh, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
I'd like to actually, not the average, I'd like to have, uh, if you could, get, uh, all sizes from the smallest to the largest. That would be great.
Okay, very, of the, of the prototype stores, okay.
Thank you, appreciate that. Uh, Bill, you all set?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Bill. And, uh, Brenda?
Uh, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Brenda. I'm gonna open it up to, uh, I don't have anything to add as well. I, I think there were some good comments. I'm, I'm interested in seeing the size of the buildings as well as, as is Bill. Um, so I'm gonna open it up to, uh, to audience. And I know Jack is out there, right? So, is, is, or is he? Maybe he went, maybe he's, maybe he's sleeping too. Jack out there?
Yeah, it looks like he's there, yeah.
Yes, I'm here, Joe.
Okay. Hi, Jack.
Hi, Joe.
You're on. Tell us, tell us what your thoughts are.
Uh, would you like me to speak now, Joe?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one thing I didn't know was the elevation, increased elevation of the front facade. Uh, that will increase, uh, a wall to reflect sound. So as long as it's not yet built, maybe they can incorporate into it, uh, on the back some acoustic sound absorbing, uh, materials as part of their design, uh, which can help reduce the sound coming from that level. Uh, I know Paul mentioned that directly behind, but some of my neighbors closer to Mountain Road, uh, can visually see it easier than I can. Uh, so that there's more than just me impacted. Uh, several of my neighbors are, are directly impacted, of course, all of us are affected by the sound. Uh, the last part, I, I know the effort is to ask employees to park to the back, but that back corner is close to, uh, a swampy vegetated site, and I know if I were an employee who leaves after everyone else leaves, I would be very reluctant to go back there, so trying to get your employees to park there, uh, is, is going to be a task because they won't want to, and I wouldn't blame them, uh, going back there, whether, and of course, I don't want you putting any huge lights out there either at this point, because, uh, from my kitchen window, when it snows, it looks like the battleship Galactica landed there because the, even the down shining light reflects off the snow, and you just see this huge glow, uh, you know, when there's snow there. And other times, it's not bad, but, yeah, if the lighting were in back there, I think it would, uh, directly be visible by some of my neighbors clo- closer to, uh, Mountain Road. Uh, other than that, uh, I think Ernie made the point, if they incorporate the, the discussions that I've had with, uh, Mr. Jansky and put those in there, uh, they have a way of monitoring, uh, dumpster pickups at odd hours. I, I hope that they have a way they can monitor from their Charleston headquarters or wherever it is, and they keep a record of it, uh, on, on disc or somehow, so they know who was there when. Uh, because typically dumpster drivers like to operate three, four, or five in the morning when they can move around quickly without having to compete with traffic. Uh, that's just the nature of their business. Uh, the problem being for us, number one, it's a bylaw, two, it's, uh, in the summertime when our windows are open, they tend to bang the covers on those things to make sure they've fully emptied them. Uh, and, and that's, that's the problem at three or four in the morning. Uh, you can really hear the, the, the sound just rolls up that hill. As far as the addition to the back, they're adding another forty-five degree corner uh, of hard material, which is just going to reflect the sound that much more, which is why I'm looking for, you know, any type of sound attenuation you could put in there. Uh, that's all my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Jack. Um, Mark, uh, applicant, um, any comments to, to Jack's request?
Um, no, not at all. Uh, you know, I've known Jack for a long time and long and distinguished career in the board, and certainly I know the folks at Edens have, uh, history with him as well, and I, I think Edens has, you know, tried to be upfront and share their contact information in the past if there's ever an issue out there. And, you know, look, I, I know it's not for the neighbors to, you know, have to police and, and call every time there's an issue, and I think Edens is committed to making sure that things are handled properly and, um, you know, um, that's, that's what their commitment is, so, um.
So I guess the quest, the question that, um, he raised is that, is there a way to put up, uh, some sort of a, a sound barrier structure? Uh, Jack, I, I'm, I'm not, are you talking about for the roof, uh, mechanics or for the, um, dumpster or for both?
Is that a question to me, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, what I didn't realize, uh, where they, it taking down the peak structure that was, uh, the Outback and putting up a raised facade, I'm, I'm sure for signage purposes, that goes above the, uh, the actual hard roof line, the back of that, if it's a hard material, will reflect sound and bounce it back towards the residences. So they could put some type of an acoustic or sound absorbing material as part of that facade, it could dampen the sound somewhat. Uh, if, if the new mechanics, mechanicals are designed to be less noisy, uh, that's fine. There, I, I did send some information to Kristen about a company in, I believe, Tampa, Florida, that specializes in sound absorbing or sound damping material for, uh, areas just such as that, and, and that information's available if it's needed based upon sound. I, I certainly don't, uh, don't wanna drive these people away. I want them to occupy the building, because a, an empty shopping center is, is not good for anybody. Uh, it attracts vandals and vermin and what have you, so I wanna see them full and successful. I just want them to do it in a way that's, uh, considerate of their residential neighbors.
Great, okay, thanks, Jack. Uh, would you, Mark, is that something you guys could, uh?
Yeah, I, I, if, if you could just indulge me for maybe thirty seconds, we, we do have our architect here. I, I'm actually looking at the plan. I, I'm not sure that we are gonna be increasing the, the height of the, and I'm looking at the existing peak and compare that to the, the new Five Below, but George, do you wanna maybe speak as to whether you, you feel that there'd be any impact from what's being proposed and a need for anything additional, or?
Yeah, sure. Hi, everyone. My name is George Miller from Sargent T. Uh, so we are not going any higher than the, uh, the peak that's currently there. We are going a, a bit wider, but it's not much higher than the existing power pit that's currently there. It's, it's roughly around three feet higher than the existing power pit that's, that's currently, um, there. That was the highest, and then, uh, we're, we're no longer going higher than that peak. Um, I did, I did some research in regards to the rooftop units and the amount of sound that they currently, uh, will, will, will come out from them. And, uh, based on the cut sheets, they, they are at the, at its lowest fricking frequency, it will be at seventy-seven decibels, which is considered, uh, as loud as a vacuum cleaner, um, within a hundred feet. And then given the span within the closest neighbors, which is about one hundred feet away, that sound would be reduced to about fifty-four, uh, decibels, and which is considered a normal conversation. Um, however, um, I do, um, I will look into Jack's, uh, in regards to the back of the power pit for some sound, um, uh, crucicles, and see if we could reduce any additional noise.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Um, I'm gonna ask if there's anybody else in the audience that, uh, has any questions or comments? Anybody else in the audience that has any questions or comments?
I see that Betsy, whose hand is up, but I'm not sure if it's still up from previously. Betsy, are you still up?
Um, I'm here, but I, no, I'm, I'm good. That was from previously.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
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 Anybody else? Is that it?
That's all we see right now.
All right, uh, Joe, with that, uh, this is Bill. I'd like to make a motion to continue the matter to Planning Board meeting of January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Second.
All right, then moved and seconded. Roll call?
Vice Chairman and Pumba?
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
All right, Joe, uh, Bill here, uh, I'd like to make a motion to take items seven C through seven G together for discussion purposes.
Agreed.
Great, thanks, Bill.
Second, second.
Moved and seconded. Will you get a roll call?
Vice Chairman and Pumba?
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Joe, would you like me to summarize what they all are?
Yeah, that would be great. It's a little bit, I mean, I could read it, but it's a little bit long.
We have a couple, a couple of the next couple are, have a, a number of things associated. Um, so this, um, there are one, two, three, four, five public hearings, uh, public hearing for an application of a special permit pursuant to twelve-one-five PD special permit. All of these are associated with the property at one-seventy-four Fort Middlesex Turnpike and submitted by the Nord Blue Company. There's also a special permit pursuant to section one-six-seven discharge from manmade structures into the wetlands of the Northwest Park PDD. Section one-seven-five accessory health club associated entirely within a commercial or residential facility of the Northwest Park PDD. Special permit pursuant to section one-seven-six dry cleaning drop-off pickup of the Northwest Park Plan PDD. And lastly, approval of a special permit pursuant to section one-seven-twelve garage space or spaces and/or attached or detached structures above and below ground or under buildings for parking in the Northwest Park PD. Again, all at one-seventy-four Middlesex Turnpike. The Nord Blue Company is the applicant.
Perhaps, Joe, if you could locate that for people that are listening and so forth, uh, where that site is.
So I think, um, the applicant has a presentation that will, uh, answer those questions as we move along, but we can certainly.
Good evening. Should I start, Joe? Uh, this is Bob Buckley.
Yep, that'd be great. Thank you, Bob.
Uh, good evening. Uh, for the record, Robert Buckley, Reema Gronstein, I have with me this evening on the development team, uh, Todd Fremont Smith, Todd Nordboom, uh, Larry Grossman, our site architect, uh, from, uh, Stantec, and, uh, a number of people for BSC, our site engineering, uh, uh, consultants. Uh, just before I begin, um, I know that those have heard me over the years, I've told, uh, boards and, uh, others that it takes about twenty years to do good, effective master planning. Um, when I was preparing for the, uh, tonight's presentation, I looked at my notes. Uh, we commenced this in two thousand and seven. It was January two thousand and seven when town meeting approved, uh, uh, the, the, this project as, uh, a master plan, and, uh, so far, we're right on schedule, fourteen years in, um, and still going strong. Uh, but the, the, the long and short of that is that it, it shows that as you go through a project of this magnitude, uh, there's a tremendous amount of conceptualization, integration, what's the vision, how do you execute the vision, how do you adjust the vision to the marketplace? And I think you'll see that this evening, that we're trying to hold to the original vision and now trying to execute the, the remaining portion of the site that has not been developed, and, uh, we're very excited about this. Uh, this is a, a component of the town meeting vote that approved the housing, uh, which is, uh, directed for senior residents and, uh, of, uh, the town, um, and this is the component of it, but at the same time, we have not lost sight of the connection with the overall project. With that, I, is it Todd, uh, is Todd gonna walk us through the, uh?
Sure, I can start it off.
Okay.
Uh, and again, Todd Fremont Smith, Nord Blue Company. Nice to see some familiar faces. It reminds me, it's been a long time since I've, we've all been together at town hall, but anyway, um, let me see if I can run the technology here. Um,
Good luck.
See if this, see if this works. Can you see?
Yeah, we can, yep.
Okay, so does it say fourth ad housing, Northwest Park?
Yes, it does, Todd.
That's always, it's always a good thing.
That's the whole presentation, right?
I want to make sure it doesn't say something else, so anyway, so we are here to talk about one-seventy-four Middlesex Turnpike, as Kristen, this is the site, which is right in front of Lifetime Fitness. You see here indicated by the yellow arrow on the corner of Fourth Ave and Middlesex Turnpike. We've been working on this site for more than a decade with a variety of different office buildings, none of which seem to be resonating with the market, and so we've got a, we've got a good site there. It's really an empty tooth on Middlesex Turnpike. It really bothers me to drive by and see this empty parcel that could be used to help knit the park together. This area, I think, shows, it's a good neighborhood, as we all know. The Third Ave has been very successful, the Burlington is a great neighbor, Lahey Clinic is a great neighbor. The people who live in the existing residential buildings at Northwest Park, almost half of them work in Burlington, which is really amazing. Over forty percent of them work in Northwest Park or Network Drive, so people really want to be here, and then they want to live, they want to live here, and they want to eat here and go to Wegmans, and so it's been successful. The master planning that we've done together has really been successful. And then just for any new members of the board, I think there's one I haven't met, the original zoning called for sort of an area A, which intended to be more of a pedestrian realm, a boutique village with restaurants and shops, which is what's evolved and continues to evolve, and then area B, what is visually sort of larger corporate buildings, hotels, fitness facility, that's starting to come together as well, so that's just from the zoning. Also, just in terms of site design, you know, we, this is the height, the height diagram from the original PDD, and you'll see the site here at the bottom right of the plan, it falls about half within the sixty-foot height limit, where I remember vividly the town meeting members not wanting to have giant buildings in area B, you know, canyonizing, quote-unquote, Middlesex Turnpike and coming right up on the road. So that's just for background. When we were last, before you permitting this site, we permitted a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand square foot office building, six-story office building, and you can see here again the logic of the site of holding the building back from Middlesex Turnpike, a connection road that would lead to Lifetime Fitness, and then a parking garage, because, you know, office buildings need a lot of, a lot of parking, and we needed to build, I think it was proposed as a four-story garage at that time. What we're proposing now is a pivot to residential use. This is the, sorry, this is the approved design, this is the last building that you approved. We talked to six or seven large technology tenants about this building, it just never, it never got off the ground, literally. Currently, obviously, in the post-COVID office market, what we're seeing in Boston, and in particular, is most large tenants who are renewing are taking about, giving up about one-third to one-half of their space. So the market is definitely contracting and the sort of market, it's not, it's not, Boston's actually in pretty good shape, New York's in terrible shape, Boston's not, you know, Burlington, I think, is in solid shape, but there's just not a market right now for lots of new product, office product. So again, what we're hoping to do is pivot to a residential use, we'll talk more about that as we go forward. Northwest Park, by contrast, is doing very well. I want to reiterate that the park, because of the amenities of Third Ave, the Wegmans, the walkability of the park, the, you know, the fact that the buildings are one and two stories, they're doing very well with a whole host of various companies, which the board knows well, that are making things and doing things, and really, they're growing there. We've got a cluster of additive manufacturing companies, a cluster of medical companies, and really, the park is full, and we're, I hope to continue to be able to tell that story from a tax base, but we have not yet, we have not yet seen the kind of contraction that we're seeing in the first, in the multi-story office market. So anyway, just to let the board know, we're also working, kind of a surprise came up to us as we started thinking about housing on the site. It turns out that Lifetime Fitness, which as you know is a publicly traded company, has a, has another initiative called Lifetime Living. The Lifetime Living is, they like to co-locate residential buildings within close proximity to their clubs and create really a wellness village, and so we are working with Lifetime on a joint venture that will help co-develop and cooperate this new one-hundred-and-sixty-seven unit building, which as Bob said, at fourteen percent affordable, will yield about twenty-three affordable senior units, those senior units to be targeted toward the Burlington market. So you'll hear, we're gonna do more about the Lifetime Living concept at a later hearing. I don't want to, we'll bring them in, the gentleman who's helping us with this, Eric Peje, is actually flying tonight, he couldn't be with us tonight. I want to let him talk about it, but it's morning to, you know, it's, you know, morning to evening, it's a whole lifestyle of being in this residential building and being close to the club. They're doing a bunch of these around the country. The form of architecture that I'm showing you now is much larger than what we're thinking about for Burlington, but it does, I think it's exciting that they're, you know, they're in Coral Beach, they're in Dallas, they're doing all kinds of interesting projects around the country, and they've identified Burlington as the next target for this product. We'll talk about this more at another hearing, if that's okay with the board. As Bob mentioned, the team is, love and hate, Lifetime Fitness is part of the team, Stantec, which is a leading internet architecture firm, Larry Grossman is with us tonight. Larry's a founding principal of the Boston office, and is, we're very, you know, we're using high-level architecture talent on this project because it's a gateway site and it's important to us. Frank Di Pietro and Marissa and team, and then obviously Reema Bronstein, so some familiar people, some not familiar. I'll hand this over to the members in a minute, but just, I thought this was interesting that we did an overlay, the gray building on the site plan on the screen is the approved two-hundred-and-forty-thousand square foot office building. The red footprint that you can see that sort of sits on top of it is the proposed residential footprint. We'll go over this in more detail in a minute, but it kind of shows you that the site lodging is the same as the last time we were here, the building's essentially in the same place, we're utilizing the, this lifetime access driveway as a, as a, as a, so, we'll show you that in a minute. And then our concept is to provide a little use, a little bit of a retail outpost on the corner to hold, we'll show you images in a minute. We don't know what that residential, I'm sorry, what that retail user is today. What we're asking you to do is to consider conditionally approving this retail location, knowing we expect you would require that we come back to the board prior to building this and show you the actual user, show you the actual architecture. So we're just looking for a conditional on this small mixed-use parcel. So, but when you see this presentation, in summary, the building that we're proposing is slightly smaller, has many fewer surface parking spaces, the garage is being replaced with a, with a public common, you'll see that in a minute, and we've been able to increase the landscaping buffer along Middlesex Turnpike, and we think it's a more refined, in many ways, more refined product. So I'll just, a little bit further, sorry, this is the, you can see here on the bottom right of the plan, the residential form of the building is a very narrow building to let light in, it affords us the ability to create two courtyards, one facing east and one facing west. Again, you see the relationship of Lifetime Fitness right next door, so we can have adjacency, and we've been laid in here the balance of our three hundred, at a hundred-and-thirty-three units, which could be built in the future across what we call Fourth Ave Commons. And then you see this desire line, which we've, in the past, with master planning, the desire of people from Avenue to communicate over to this fitness area of the park and vice versa. We've got this great shot, which kind of shows the energy of Third Ave, and you see as you walk past Archer, the Archer Hotel, Lifetime Fitness is literally four minutes away, it's right there, and our thing is to continue the walking paths that we have at Third Avenue down to Fourth Avenue, and to terminate at the Lifetime Fitness front door by passing, you know, passing through the Commons. So Larry, I guess Larry Grossman at Stantec, do you want to take the architecture over from here and I can drive? If you can unmute, if you're there. Can you hear me now? Yep.
Okay, good. What I'm gonna ask you to do, Todd, is actually just to go back one slide. So when we, when we got involved, there obviously had been a lot of work done over the years, so we looked at the site and the overall master plan and the previous approved office building for the site, and there were a lot of very strong planning characteristics that we wanted to support and reinforce, but now with the new, a new use. So we looked at, we looked at various configurations on how we could place the building. This is a residential building, it's five stories, so four levels of housing over a podium that we were able to enclose over half of them. Half the amount of parking is enclosed, the balance is out on site, and then all of our lobbies and entries and backup housings are housed in the, in the first floor. But we thought that this orientation was consistent with the master plan, and really the best option, and actually better than what was previously approved, and I'll let you, I'll tell you why. We were able with this plan to introduce this retail piece at the corner to engage the corner of Middlesex and Fourth, to bring down the scale. The overall building, residential building, as compared to the offices, is shorter, but we didn't want it to be imposing on Middlesex, so we used this smaller retail pad at that transition up, but something that holds the corner and actually helps to block view of some of, some of the parking, which we think is good. There was a significant opportunity for continuing placemaking, and so instead of what was a structured parking garage, we're now introducing and proposing what we're calling the Fourth Avenue Commons, which when fully built out will be about an acre, which is a significant public space. It's not really owned by any of the buildings, because it's essentially surrounded by public or will be surrounded by public streets, and it's essentially a public gathering spot of significant size. The building is really a four-sided building, there's really no, no front or back. We have entrances both looking out onto, or facing Middlesex and onto the common, but we really wanted this building to anchor this new Fourth Avenue Commons, which is, will be part of the whole build-out of this, of this building. So now, Todd, go forward. The view, yeah, there, so this was, this was a view from Middlesex of the proposed office building, so if we advance, we took another view to the next slide of the proposed residential building. And so you can see a much finer-grained building, broken down into much smaller pieces, obviously it's apartment, it's not a, you know, more monolithic office building, but we have large windows to let in a lot of light into the units. We've tried to accentuate and create sort of a base middle and top to the building. We have the ground floor podium, which is, we're looking at, you know, masonry and stone materials. The middle, four floors are, is essentially a wood frame construction. What we've tried to do is introduce some bays to modulate and break up the mass, create a top floor different from the middle floors, and then accentuate the corners. And if you remember from the master plan, the building is essentially configured in an S shape, so that there are courtyards, one facing east, one facing west, that again, further break the building down in its overall mass. Monique and the Landscape Architecture Group will talk a little bit later about how we're introducing some site walls and landscaping along Middlesex Turnpike. You're seeing a bit of that in the foreground in this view. We go to the next one? So here's, here's a view from Middlesex as it meets Fourth Avenue, and you can see the scale of the smaller retail building, which will be a story, a story and a half, but again, at a smaller scale, I think, appropriate for interfacing with Middlesex. And then the residential building setback a little bit, again, I think scaled appropriately, but it hugs the Fourth Avenue essentially zoning setback, which is established, we can't actually come any closer, and it actually works out well because there are three or four pretty mature deciduous trees that we think through careful construction, we think we can trim them but maintain them, because they're, they're nice specimens that we, that would make a significant contribution to that overall street scale. Again, corners, this being the main corner that announces itself onto Middlesex is the largest in terms of its vertical scale, we have, you know, a large bay window, and you can see that there's, we're not cheapening any of the sides, really, the materials that are introduced really are wrapping on all four sides. And then the next view is further up, when you turn into the access road that leads, existing access road that leads to Lifetime Fitness, which you're seeing in the background, and right to the center is the Fourth Avenue Common, and you can get a sense of the scale. The building on the left-hand side is a proposed future phase in both use and scale, but we're thinking that it could be the balance of the allocated residential units, and it would all, it would help to reinforce the edges of what we're creating, which is this outside room, this outside open room, which is the common. There's a drop-off on this side into the residential building that you can see, again, that faces onto the common, so that dialogue and interaction between the public open space and the lobby, the management will all be overlooking this, this common. There's public parking along this street that acts, that's directly adjacent to the common, and there had been a, an art program, a public art program, and we, you can see in some of the drawings that we've taken just a stab at what something could be at those locations. And then, you can go to the next one, and then lastly.
Can I, can I stop for a second? This is Bill. Just, just real quick, you said that building to the left, nope, this is where you were. That building to the left is what you said to the edge of the residential, was that the plan to be?
Again, there's, there's, there's the potential to do another, I think, a hundred-and-thirty units as part of the approval for three hundred total units, and this building here is approximately a hundred-and-seventy, so we're conceptualizing that a future phase could be another residential building, and that's, that's why it's grayed out, it's not really a proposal at this point, but it's what's showing what could be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then, and then, lastly, Todd, in terms of how we're looking at designing the building, sustainability, with sustainability issues, we're looking at a LEED certifiable design. As you know, we have a bus up right on site, we're gonna have inside the building electric vehicle charging stations, and we're, we're hoping, we're proposing, we're designing to do the rooftop covered in photovoltaic, basically solar, solar panels, that would provide the majority of the electricity for all the common areas, lighting, for example, inside, outside for the project. We've also studied the possibility of solar carports, and we'll study that a little bit further, the proposal that we showed you today did not show them, and it may be that we can get all the power we need by just keeping it on the roof. And if you could go to the next slide, before we start to talk about landscape, I wanted to make one other comment to explain the building design a little bit further. You showed, we showed it to you in a smaller scale, here's, with a little bit more detail, and so you can see the S shape of the configuration of the apartment building, and the two courtyards, and those courtyards sit on top of what we're calling the podium, the first level, which is lobbies and backup house and parking, and these are, these are, you know, sizable spaces. The one on the left, it ties into the amenities that will be part of the building, offered to the tenants of the building, and spill out, it'll have, you know, a lawn and grilling and all those types of uses, and then the one on the right, which faces. And then the one on the right, which faces towards the east, is a more passive space, again, which sits on top of the podium. And you can see how the, all the apartment units tie directly into some of these spaces. So with that, and I guess the lastly, on, on this image here, you can also see that there's a, a drop-off that leads directly into the lobby. And then the entry into the garage parking is, I don't know if you can point that out Todd? Is that location right there? There. So with that, let's talk about landscape. That could be Monique? Monique, we can't hear you. Is she on or is she? I saw that she was on. Do we have her?
In that case, perhaps we have, we have Frank talk a little bit to the site.
I am here, can anyone hear me?
Yeah, you can hear me now.
You can hear me now? Okay, sorry about that. All right. So Larry was, my name is Monique Hall, I'm a landscape architect with BSC Group, and we also have Ricardo Ostrich with BSC Group, he's our Landscape Architecture Manager. If we can go, if we can zoom in a little bit on the public commons and the front entrance area of the building. I think one thing that's very important to connect around is the state. So at the public commons area, we have a set of connections that continues all along the side. Is there a lot of background noise going on right now? Is that, is that clear to me? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So we have the sidewalk that borders the site, and then we have a perimeter path. But we also have connections that would tie into a long Fourth Ave up to the north, and then also connections that tie into the Lifestyle Fitness. The path itself is an eighth of a mile, so we think that's a nice kind of touch, eight laps around, gives you a mile. It ties in nicely with the Lifestyle, Lifetime Fitness and, and active lifestyles that we expect for the residents that will be there. We expect that people could use it for jogging or walking or, you know, rollerblading. There'll be some pictures coming up soon. The lawn area is, is fairly generous, it's a great place to like throw a frisbee. You know, if you have younger families, it's a great place to like throw a blanket down and let the toddlers run around. There are bench seatings, there's currently five proposed new park benches. And currently, we're proposing two new picnic tables. With regards to the pedestrian protections at the building, we're also proposing continuing the sidewalk all the way throughout the front entrance. So even though there is a vehicular drop-off area at the front entrance, the suggestion here is that we would raise that drop-off area to be at the same level as the existing sidewalk. And we'd do a different paving treatment with some pavers there as opposed to asphalt. So that really feels like a nice pedestrian plaza, and it feels like a pedestrian space rather than having a sidewalk that's interrupted in two locations by asphalt paving. So then the sidewalk would be continuous as opposed to discontinuous on your way through the landscape to Lifetime Fitness. On either side of that front entrance kind of plaza area, we're proposing like a tree bosque on one side as an anchor and then a tree alleys on the other side, just to give some edges to that, to that plaza. Can we go to the next slide? So here's some precedent images. The top four images in the left corner show what that public commons could look like. We really see that perimeter path being a nice generous width, six or seven feet, allowing people to use it in both directions. The picnic tables would be great for families to come, and then the bench seating would have arms and backrest, and then there's a nice little side table option. So, you know, you bring your water, your coffee, your kombucha, whatever, whatever beverage is in fashion at the time. The large image to the right is the courtyard deck at Huntington, that's also in Northwest Park. So this just kind of shows what those amenity areas could look like. Larry had mentioned they could be grills or fire tables, there could be lounge seating, there could be sunbathing. There's lots of opportunities to start to introduce some kind of luxury fitness, luxury amenities at, at the courtyard terraces. And then the bottom four images just kind of show what that front entrance might look like. We will be doing fieldstone walls throughout the site, and these will be just kind of reproducing the fieldstones walls that are already common throughout Northwest Park. And then where seating is appropriate, we would top those off with a cast stone concrete cap just to facilitate seating. The second image on the bottom left is just what a tree bosque looks like. We think it'd be really nice to do kind of like a small urban forest right in front of the building. Maybe some, some more narrow columnar flowering trees would help to accentuate the building architecture as well as the Lifetime Fitness building architecture. And then, you know, obviously there's a variety of paving treatments and paving patterns that we could do. We would use bollards to separate the vehicular from the pedestrian traffic. But again, this feels more like a sidewalk and a pedestrian area rather than, you know, an asphalt paved vehicular drop-off. Next slide please. And then just continuing the conversation about arrival sequences, we have a generous landscape buffer along Middlesex Turnpike that reciprocates the first landscape buffer along Third Ave in front of the Bancroft. So we'll be replicating the same fieldstone walls, the same kind of geometry. There's a generous, generous planting buffer where we'll do shrubs as well as colorful perennials, so we'll have seasonal color throughout the year. As Larry mentioned, where possible, we're going to preserve the existing large trees. So those are the, like the stick kind of trees that you see. And then I just want to, you know, make a little note about Nordlum as kind of owners and managers. They do a really good job with maintenance of landscape plant material. And then, you know, there's so many projects where you design and, and provide really nice plant material, and then three or five years later, you're looking at a big empty mulch bed. So I think Nordlum understands that this is an arrival sequence, this is another gateway into the Northwest Park area. They've done a really good job with other landscape buffers along the edge. And then we have a couple of slides that show the initial buffer at Bancroft in 2017. And so the, the next slide is one year's growth, and then the second slide is another year's growth. And we think it's going to be a really nice feature just helping to screen the large parking that's needed to accommodate the housing, but also helping to provide aesthetics and kind of, what's the word? Brand the area. So I think that's about, oh, if we could go back to the building slide, the landscape treatment will also continue around the building. So where possible, we want to berm up the soil around the building just to soften the edges of that ground floor. So the pedestrian vehicular experience will be mostly landscape around the ground floor where possible.
I think we lost, we lost you. She can, can anybody hear her?
I think she's done.
You're done, she's done.
That concludes my portion.
Oh, okay. Very good. Was Frank going to speak or are we?
I've noticed that, I don't want to compliment Chris Frank DePietre from the BSC Group, but I want to compliment folks for feigning interests throughout the whole rest of this presentation when really what you wanted to hear about was the site work and the site design. So with that, I'm going to try to make this quick because it's not quite as exciting as the architecture or the landscaping. If Todd or whoever.
Frank, we're still trying to get over the fact that we're not able to see what, what kind of tie you're wearing today.
Well, I'm going to, I'm, I'm sad to say, except for Christmas, I have not worn a tie in 10 months. I will for the next hearing, I'll put a tie on and a suit or something, just from the waist up, you'll think I'm dressed. It, Todd, whoever's running the slides, if you could go back to the plan that had the overlay of the old office design and the new.
Yep, hold on, let me try, let me try.
You will, sort of building on what Bob and Todd said, you can sort of see a lot of the history. So in November 2016, the plan had been approved, the proposed office building. And when we go back to the overlay, you can sort of see, there you go, thank you. The, the sort of, the same reasoning why. And why the building is where it is, again, one of the main reasons is, as part of the Northwest Park PDD, there's a 200-foot set tact from the Middlesex Turnpike where we can be no higher than 60 feet, and then just beyond that, we can be higher, as high as 80 feet. So that's sort of where we put the building. The second reason was the drop-off area. We really didn't want to put a drop-off off of Middlesex, off of either Middlesex Turnpike or Fourth Avenue. We wanted to keep the traffic away from that and on our site. And that roadway that goes from Fourth Avenue to Lifetime Athletic, that was the perfect place for that. And then the third reason is tied to the floodplain that, that goes on to the site. Just a little bit of information on the improvements, if you will, from going from the office to the proposed residential. So the office had a total square footage of about 240,000 square feet. Here, including the proposed future retail, it's about 223,000 square feet. More to the point, the office had a parking garage and a total of 865 parking spaces. We have a total of about 291 parking spaces, which 164 are under the building. More importantly, probably to the town and the, and the board, is that in that front area from the easterly face of the building going towards Middlesex Turnpike, the office had 179 parking spaces. We're showing, including the retail, 102 parking spaces. You can also see that we've pulled back the parking area a little bit farther away from Middlesex Turnpike, knowing when we went through the planning process with the office, that area along Middlesex Turnpike was a critical one. The office was somewhere between 22 and about 56 feet back from the edge of the pavement on Middlesex Turnpike. We're now, except for around where the retail is going to be, it's about 30 feet back. But the proposed parkings, somewhere on the order of 40 to 56, 58 feet back. What that does is include, it increases the green space along Middlesex Turnpike from about 13,000 square feet to just over 16,000 square feet. The other item that Monique and the, and other folks talked about, Larry talked about, is that the open space for the public park. And again, you sort of saw, the public park is going to be on, eventually on two pieces of property. The future development that's going to go to the west will have a portion of the park. But the portion of the park that's going to be built as part of this project is about a quarter of an acre in the area. So between these two open space areas, you've got about six tenths of an acre, not counting all the landscaping around the site. I think Monique or Larry may have mentioned, there are a number of existing trees, particularly along Middlesex Turnpike and some on Fourth Ave. We're going to try to save those. We're looking back to when Wegmans went in, we're all surprised that Wegmans took a great deal of care and saved those big trees right adjacent to their parking lot. So we're going to look and to try to do the same thing. Depends a lot on what the trees, the health of the trees are and stuff like that. The wetland resources are an issue on this site. The good news is across the easterly side of Middlesex Turnpike, we've got boarding vegetation, wetlands and a riverfront. The buffers for both of those extend into our proposed buffer along Middlesex Turnpike. The real important wetlands resource area is the floodplain. So the floodplain has been mapped by FEMA and updated recently. And it essentially runs from under the Route 3, from the landlocked parcel, down Fourth Avenue. What's really interesting here is normally the floodplain is flat. Here, because of the slope of Fourth Avenue, we have a grade change. So the FEMA map indicates about where the public park is going to be, the westerly side of the site. The 100-year flood elevation is at elevation 131. In the middle of the proposed residential building, that flood elevation is about 130. At the easterly edge of that building near the parking, that flood elevation is about 129. About halfway between the building and Middlesex Turnpike, that flood elevation is 127. And at Middlesex Turnpike, the flood elevation is 120, 120, 127 is at Middlesex Turnpike. So normally, under the, the state regulations, Building Code, and under the Wetlands Protection Act and local wetlands bylaws, if we modify the floodplain, if we fill in a level of floodplain, we're required to provide incremental compensation that for every foot we fill in, say between elevation 130 and 131, we've got to provide the same volume or more in that same increment. So we can't obviously provide, for example, on the, we can't provide flood storage on the easterly side of the site where the flood level is below 130. We can't provide flood compensation there. So what we're proposing here is to utilize a portion of the garage for flood storage as we go across the site. The other really critical factor in the building design is the regulations, both the Building Code and the FEMA regulations require that the building elevations be set above the 100-year flood elevation. So for a first habitable floor where people are going to be living, that elevation has to be two feet above the highest flood elevation on the site. So they noted on the westerly side, the flood elevation is elevation 131. So where people are going to be living, the first floor, habitable floor, has to be set at elevation 133. The entrance, the mechanicals have to be set at or above the 100-year flood. So that would again be elevation 131. We've taken care of that in our building design. What that really leads to is, and there's been some discussion about maybe shifting the building forward, we, if we shift the building forward, we have to maintain those elevations. As the site drops off towards Middlesex Turnpike, 129, 128, 127, the elevation of the building would still have to remain the same, and that would end up having a higher exposed foundation. Now, we don't have the height, we're maintaining the height setback from the PDD, but that's an important piece of the whole item. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions from the, the site grading and the storm drainage system. We're basically matching what we did before. The groundwater in this area, when the town wells are off, and they will be off in the near future, is about four feet below the existing grade. We have to have a two-foot separation from any infiltration by DEP standards, so we can't do infiltration. What we're going to be doing here is treating the water, removing all the pollutants, and then holding the water in an underground detention system, releasing it. If you recall, when we did the development of Third Avenue, we overdesigned our infiltration system. So there is a component of the PDD that says, as a whole, the Northwest Park PDD has to increase the total recharge of the site, the entire Northwest Park site, by 10%. We're well above that with the work we already did in Third Avenue and other locations. So this area here, when we add it, will still be above that 10%, we're meeting the zoning. I'll be happy to be quiet now and we can talk about this now, or we can continue this, we've got a full agenda.
Joe, I think that completes our presentation. I know you've got an agenda that's quite extensive. So if you have any questions or guidance, you know, comments, would be happy to consider them and be in a position to respond at the next meeting.
Okay. If the, if there are any comments, I was going to kind of just, you know, take the presentation, which is great. You guys did a great job, it was very thorough, it's very, an interesting concept. I, I was just curious as to what, if you have any thoughts on what that little retail building was going to be.
Go ahead Todd, you can.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, we've, you know, and I, I have to give a lot of credit to Liz, Brady and Kristen, who've been working with us over the past few weeks and months to figure this whole thing out. But what we've said to them is, we know that's an important location. And I think that doing the right thing for that retail location is critical for the, for the park. And so what we're going to say is, we'd like permission to, to go out and market that little pad for something, but we'll come back to you when we know exactly who it is, because, you know, it could. but we'll come back to you when we know exactly who it is, because, uh, you know, it could be that it's a coffee shop or something interesting. I think, okay, uh, we're, we're gonna be very careful not to do something, uh, that's just run-of-the-mill.
Yeah, and it, it's consistent, Joe, it's consistent what was done on Third Avenue, where we showed the, the massing, that we're gonna activate the, uh, the corner, but as the user came forward, we had to come back to the board for the review of that user. So, well, we wanted to show that that corner was gonna be active. And I know that Jonathan's fax is on this, uh, on this, uh.
Yeah, we, we did, we did show, we did show some public sculpture, we do still intend to pursue that, Jonathan, so, um, give us a few more months and we'll, we haven't forgotten about it.
Great, alright. Excellent, tha- thank you, guys. Um, you know what I'm gonna do at this point is, this is gonna be a process, so.
Yep.
Uh, you know, I think maybe we, we go to departmental comments, and maybe we can get the departmental comments. And then briefly, if there's any questions that the board members might have that require additional information, maybe we can just get those out there rather than hearing all comments at this point.
Okay.
And, and Joe, it was a lot tonight, if they, if, if any of the members or any, anyone watching asks questions, if they get them to the planning board staff, and they'll get them to us, we'll be, we'll be in a position to respond at the next meeting.
So, so to Joe, this is Kristen, so to Joe and everyone else, um, departments are still, uh, I don't think we have any department comments in yet. Um, we have been, as, uh, Todd mentioned, talking to the team about, um, really looking at, it's a four-sided building, the other two buildings within Northwest Park are kind of tucked in, um, into the, the side slopes within, um, some of the other uses. So, but this building, being a four-sided building, really understanding that relationship between the building, as well as the, the common, and just really looking at the site. And Frank said, in many ways, but, I mean, to sum up everything Frank said, it's a tricky site, the site, um, the floodplain makes it tricky, so to really understand the treatments, to understand how we get those building faces and activation of the site, I mean, they're do, they did a great job on Third Ave, um, this site, the common, but just looking at that kind of pedestrian-friendly, not necessarily a long Middlesex Turnpike, but just kind of along those, all those sides of the buildings. And that front corner, um, we've been talking about that, you know, what is this? And really looking to make sure that the relationship between Fourth Ave, Lifetime Fitness, this building, all work together. So, you know, we kind of joked like, you know, you're not looking out of a residential building and saying, oh, I wanna go to a drive-through bay. Um, but, and just kind of saying that we really need to massage that a little bit more before I think we'd be comfortable with what that is. But I think it's really critical, and I agree with the team, that there be something to define that corner and that edge. So, um, anyway, that's our comments for now, we still have, you know, some more to just talk through, but just wanted to throw that out there for, for the, the board to think about, as to think about your comments.
Okay, great, thanks, Kristen. Um, so if there are no departmental comments, then I think I'm gonna just briefly let the board, uh, have any questions rather than get into any lengthy discussions. Um, if you have any questions that maybe require some additional information, why don't we get those out now? And, uh, and then we can address them further at the next meeting.
Alternatively, Joe, too, Will, as I said, if you get them to the, to the staff, we'll, we'll pick them up.
Okay, so.
Joe, Paul Raymond.
Yep, Paul, yep, Paul.
Yes, I just wanna hand the bouquet to Todd Fremont Smith. I can remember many years ago, when they were starting to tear down those old buildings, and Roger Nordblum, I said, why are you tearing those down? He says, the whole thing is gonna be redone, that's not what the market wants. And at a meeting of land use, this young guy comes in with what I call Todd's dream. And what we have now is what he was telling us was coming, and I thought it was fantastic. And it's a delight to see this as part of the completion of Todd's dream for Burlington. So thank you, Todd.
More importantly, Paul, is he grown up in the fourteen?
Thank you, Paul, now I have gray hair, now I have gray hair, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really exciting, it's really a kind of a cool, cool area in town, you know? I think it's gonna be, uh, a, a pleasure, I really wanna see the finished product. What, what are we looking at the timeframes here?
So, uh, this building, we would start, with your help, we, we would start construction of this building in fall, in fall, and then it would be, it would open up in about eighteen months later.
Okay.
It's quite, it's quite a big effort, but we would get going on it right away. We just still have to go through the whole design process and, and, uh, but we've, we would start the construction this year.
Right, very good. Um, alright, so why don't we, if, you know, we'll take that, uh, Bob's comment on, on, if you have any, and, and if you, if any of the board members want some additional information, we can put that request in outside of the meeting and, and see if they can show up with whatever they need. And, you know, at this point, we can, why don't we continue, uh, for the next meeting?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Joe, with that, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty.
Second.
You might wanna ask if anyone on the call in the public had a comment for you, can you guys continue, can you guys continue?
Yep, what, uh, but, I'm sorry, what was that?
I'll go in.
Yep, Kristen, I, I think.
Sorry, yeah, I was like going through somewhere, but I just mentioned, uh, just make sure you ask the public to have a comment before you continue.
Yeah, we can, well, I mean, if there are members of the public, then, then why don't we get their comments now? I don't, I don't think we necessarily have to do that every meeting, right? We have to make sure we have public input, but we, the board's not even given input at this point, so. But we can certainly open to the public if there are people there, I don't want them to be showing up and, and not be heard, so. Uh, are there any members of the public that would like to comment or questions?
It looks like Scott Martin has a question. Hand up.
Good evening, folks. Scott Martin, I'm a town meeting member for Precinct Seven, and also the chairperson of the Bylaw Review Committee. Uh, on one of your slides, you showed that you were going to look into, uh, construction using lead, uh, and that, uh, you would also be looking into using, uh, PV rooftop, uh, installation. Um, I just want to, uh, ask that the planning board make sure that it's not looking into, that those are things that, when this is built, the construction is net-zero lead, uh, construction, and that there are, in fact, um, solar panels or PV panels, uh, on the roof. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
What?
Um, any, any other members of the, uh, public that would like to speak? It being none, I assume?
No, we don't see anyone else.
Okay, so they're being none, as I said, I'm gonna forego the, uh, comments of, of the board at this point. We can just, I think we have a motion and a, uh, and a second to continue, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call on it?
Alright, so Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yeah.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, uh, with that, uh, I'll make a motion, uh, this is Bill to take Adam seven H to seven, set Q, together for discussion purposes.
Yep, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Paul.
Uh, and, uh, oh, yeah, roll call, then I'll summarize. Sure, uh, Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, Kristen, if you wouldn't mind summarizing this.
No problem. So, um, there is a number of public hearings. This is for property located at Sixty Blanchard Road. Azure Clean Rooms On Demand Burlington LLC is the applicant. And they are here to discuss an application for approval of a number of special permits. Special permit pursuant to Section four-two-seven-one, light manufacturing or processing plants, prototype manufacturing, um, of the zoning bylaw. Section four-two-seven-one-one, research and development of the zoning bylaw. Four-two-seven-four, laboratories engaged in research, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, non-biologic medicine and physics. Special permit pursuant to Section four-two-seven-four-one, life science laboratories engaged in research, prototype manufacture, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies, and engineering, life systems, technologies, environmental and biomedical devices. Um, special permit pursuant to Section four-two-seven-four-two, life science laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies and listens for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to pharmaceutical, biomedical technologies, engineering, life systems, technologies, environmental, biomedical, biomedical devices. Special permit pursuant to four-two-seven-nine, hazardous toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport disposal, and discharge. Special permit pursuant to four-two-seven-eleven, generation or storage of hazardous waste, limited to volumes classified as very small quantity generator. Special permit pursuant to four-three-two-eight, maintenance shops, power plants, machine shops, and similar structures to support permitted uses. Special permit pursuant to four-four, four-point-four-point-one-point-eleven, discharge from man-made structures in the wetland. And finally, application of special permit pursuant to six-one-two-one, non-conforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaw. And actually, we should have a minor, we, well, unless we do the minor, well, anyway, there's also a minor engineering change for some site modifications. Um, so that's, that in summary is all, what, almost ten?
Could you repeat that, Kristen?
Okay, um, we have the applicants here.
Yes, thanks, Kristen, and good evening, Mr. Chair Member of the Board. Happy New Year to everyone, it's nice to see everyone's face. Um, for the record, Christine Hung, attorney at Reimer Bronstein. Um, with me tonight, as part of the development, development team, we have, um, Christine Crezier from Azure, uh, Todd Fremont Smith from Nor, Norblum, who represents developer, Frank DePietro from the BSC Group, our site civil engineer, there are others also on, on the Zoom call, and then they can introduce themselves as may be, uh, necessary. Um, Azure Clean Rooms On Demand LLC is a national life science consulting and project management company that supports early-phase, small-scale life science industry manufacturers through its programs of, um, clean rooms on demand. So this program leases clean room facilities to its client and provides technical support to ensure that clients are in compliance with regulatory requirements and industry best practices during, uh, these clients' manufacturing processes. And it allows these clients to focus on the science while Azure focuses on the technical aspects, such as the compliance and facility maintenance, which ultimately benefits everyone because it accelerates the product, um, speed to the market. Um, each of the clients will engage in Azure to create a custom scope of work to support their eight early-phase manufacturing activities. And this means that Azure will control all the kind of incoming, uh, chemicals and materials of storage, distribution, and disposable, all, everything on, on the site. Um, currently, um, Azure operates these clean rooms out of, um. That was weird. Has it stopped? I don't think.
That's, that's what it's like for Frank every day.
Yeah, that was, um, that was a Doctor Who episode, I think.
Anybody not talking should mute their mic, and, uh, yeah.
Sounds like an alien, an alien experience, I think.
I know, sorry.
I think what happened.
Glad we're back to normal.
I got, I got disconnected. I got disconnected and I was trying to get back in.
Well, I'm glad that we're, we don't have that sound anymore. Um, so where I left off, so Azure currently operates a clean room on demand out of, uh, in Waltham, and they're looking to expand in Burlington at Sixty Blanchard Road. Um, they are, you know, part of the influx of these life science companies are in large part due to the hard work of this board and Kristen and her staff in creating zoning that's flexible and welcoming to these life science companies, which ultimately will benefit Burlington in terms of diversification of the tax base and, and, um, enhancing tax revenue. Um, at Sixty Blanchard, they're looking to do an internal tenant fit-out and then also do some exterior modifications. Um, they're gonna add a loading bay and then also enhance some utilities so that it ensures uninterrupted power sources to the site. Um, as part of this process of all these special permits and, uh, the minor engineering change, we, uh, met with the DCM and we had a Board of Health Subcommittee meeting, which went really well. We're working closely with Christine Mathis and Dr. Weiner to cut, to answer all of their concerns. They've raised a lot of good questions. We open up before the Board of Health on Tuesday, and then also with the Conservation Commission next week as well. So we are, um, you know, going in front of those boards. Um, so in terms of the roadmap for our presentation tonight, next I'm gonna have Todd Fremont Smith, uh, from Norblum, talk about the site and what he's kind of seen in terms of, uh, life science companies coming, um, into Burlington. Then after Todd, Christine Crezier from Azure will, um, talk about the operations. She can walk you through the floor plan. And then last but not least, uh, Frank DePietro from the BSC Group can walk the board through the, um, exterior site modifications. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. So thank you very much, and Todd, do you wanna take over?
Sure, uh, again, Todd Fremont Smith, Norblum, this is a much shorter presentation, so don't, don't be afraid. Sixty Blanchard, uh, we're very thrilled to have found Azure Group and their clean room on demand concept. Um, I think everyone will, will remember this building, this was the Datacon facility directly on one-twenty-eight, uh, for many years. Um, uh, it's, it's a, it's a terrific location, we purchased it about a year and a half ago. Um, and we've been in the market trying to figure out what to do with it, looking for a life science tenant, frankly. We're, we're thrilled to have found Azure. So it's a single-story, fifty-thousand-foot building. There's really not a lot going on outside the building as part of this project, there's, there's much more going on inside, and I'll let Christine talk about that. But in fact, Christine, do you wanna just talk about, uh, who you guys are?
Absolutely, can you hear me?
Yep.
Wonderful, uh, thank you for the introduction. Uh, for the record, my name is Christine Crezier, and I'm a Senior Director at Azure Clean Rooms On Demand. Um, I do wanna take a moment to thank the Burlington Planning Board and the town of Burlington for giving us the opportunity to meet tonight, uh, our close site for Sixty Blanchard Road. Uh, as you can see by the slide ahead of you, the Azure Group partners with leading pharmaceutical, biotechnology, and medical device manufacturers to provide efficient, efficient and innovation solutions that help them start, scale, and sustain their GMP organizations. Uh, we currently have fifteen locations throughout the United States, and we have more on the way. At these sites, we offer consulting services, IT services, training, locations. Uh, there are labs where, where companies can send samples to, to have them tested. And we, we have clean room, uh, on demand in Waltham, Massachusetts. We're proposing this site in Burlington, and we're launching a site in Vista, California, that should open in April of, of this year. Um, and next slide, please. Um, this, uh, this slide talks about the customer challenges that we see. Uh, so we see that many of the challenges in the area have a need for clinical manufacturing capability. They lack current good manufacturing practice or CGMP experience. They may have limited quality management systems or safety control implementation, and they have lengthy facility design build timeframes. Uh, we also see that they have insufficient warehouse, materials, storage, and sometimes the staff that can operate these. Next slide. So we have a vision, we would like to accelerate the product development and manufacturing lifecycle of critical. lifecycle of critical therapies. And our, our mission is to provide compliant and phase appropriate CGMP solutions and services from discovery to delivery. Our, our president and CEO really likes to say, you focus on the science and we focus on the compliance, we're asking them to come in and work in our clean rooms and we help guide them and we help, help them get through this process because sometimes we can help them with knowledge and, and guidance that they need at these times. Next slide, please. This is Frank's slide, could we jump to the next one and we'll come back to this one in a little while? Thank you. This is the layout of the facility. This facility is the fifty thousand square feet we're proposing to demo the interior. We would like to install twenty clean rooms, as you see in the blue areas identified in the center. There are ten at the top and ten at the bottom and they're supported by these white areas. So these white areas are clean room support areas, they have locker rooms for staffs to come and gown in, they have ambient and cold storage, material storage areas, separate receiving and shipping and waste management areas, we have a lot of delineated spaces that follow very strict guidance protocols put out by the FDA for this type of manufacturing. So we, we engaged Safety Partners, which is a well-known local Massachusetts company that is a certified women's business owned company, and, and they helped us launch very specific protocols for the Waltham site and we are engaging them again for the Burlington site. The final piece that you see here is the yellow, which is the non-laboratory, non-science spaces, those are offices, there are break rooms, there are conference rooms that, that flesh out the rest of the facility. In this facility, we have a lot of security, there are security cameras and there are access badges which we grant. The, both the Azure staff and the clients may not gain access to the science areas without very specific training and, and proving that they have received the education they need to access those areas. We access, we have the badge control. Next slide, please.
I think that's, I, I don't know if that's, we may have screwed up, Christine, that's the last one we have.
I'm all right. The clean rooms that we provide are modular clean rooms, they're ISO seven, ISO eight, ready to use clean rooms, and these are dedicated to the clients, these clean rooms are not shared. Our clean rooms and customized services, we provide them on an annual basis to our clients, this means that they engage for a minimum of one year and as we've seen in the past, it's for multiple years. They also can take more than one clean room at a time, so as you see, these clean rooms are adjacent to each other, we have panels that we can remove and we can modify so they can have more than one space at a time if they need a greater manufacturing space. In addition, we manage the facility, we manage the cleaning services, the waste management, the environmental monitoring, the quality management, the utilities and vendor management, the backup power, so we handle the, the building ownership and the operations pieces that go there to give these tenants, which there will be multiple tenants and these workflows, the governance that they require to get multiple products produced at the same time in very independent and isolated areas. Overall, we find that the sixty Blanchard site has a lot of potential. And as Christine stated, we're impressed with the work that Burlington put in to get the mass bio, bio ready platinum ranking, and we feel that this, this resonates with our core mission and our vision and we feel that our, our business plan can attract a lot of interesting startups and, and early phase manufacturers to the Burlington area. This site would be our flagship site, it is the largest facility that we propose to build over the next several that we are planning on launching. And we believe that our business will attract top talent and it will bring in impactful companies to the region and it will provide local jobs. With that, I, I thank you and I'll, I'll hand it to Frank.
I'm doing a bad job of driving, sorry Frank.
That's okay, I'm totally confused. We're talking about sixty Blanchard Road, again, for the record, Frank DePietro. So this is a rendered version of the site plan, I will note that Emily Durick and Melissa Valentino, my office are here, they're the ones that do the colored plans, I get the crayons all over my hand and on my tie and shirt, so they basically take care of it. This basically shows the access from, on the right-hand side from Blanchard Road, the existing driveway goes up all the way up about a thirty foot elevation change to where the existing building is, the building is located adjacent to I ninety five, one twenty eight, it's about a fifty thousand, just over fifty thousand square feet. So the light green area is essentially wetland, so a good portion of the site is boarding, vegetative, wetland, we also have the blue shows where there's riverfront, a river, riverfront areas. So what we're looking to do is essentially replace the existing parking lot and driveway, the pavement was cracked, the curbing was pretty much all gone, the very few existing catch basins were probably on the order of museum pieces, no deep sumps, no hoods. And so what we're looking to do is we're going to repave the entire site, we will be upgrading the stormwater system, putting in catch basins that have deep sumps, four foot sumps and foot, where they're going to then discharge into a water quality unit and then they will be basically utilizing the existing outlets, so we're not impacting any wetland areas. We will be meeting the mass DEP eighty percent total suspended solids removal and the oil and grease removal. We are looking to the little dark green area right near the right-hand side, near Blanchard Road, we're adding in a water quality swell, it's about a hundred and twenty feet long, it will have plants, it will have material that will allow some of the runoff to go into a little bit of recharge, not, not a real lot of recharge, there's a small area, a depressed area at the very end, on the right end, that area would overflow into the adjacent catch basin, so any pollutants we picked up, put into the catch basin, go through the deep sump in the hood and then also run through a water quality and so again, all the runoff from pavement areas is going to be removed, have the suspended solids removed. As far as some of the other site improvements, basically they're tied to upgrading the site, so we're going to be bringing in two new six inch diameter gas mains from Blanchard Road, one, both will go up the middle of the driveway, one will curve off and go into the, again, the right end or the westerly side of the building, I'm sorry, the southerly side of the building, the other will continue to the light, white area and the dark green area on the left-hand side of the building. In that area, we're proposing to put in a bio, let's see, a co-gen facility that is in the process of being designed, that will not only serve for backup power for the laboratories, it will also provide a highly environmentally friendly energy situation run by natural gas. The building itself is going to be modified a little bit, we're going to be adding in free loading bays, you can sort of just see right on the edge, again, on the right edge of the building where the hand is, we're angling this, the loading dock so that trucking them in, go into the area that's parking, that's sort of crosshatched or turn around and then be able to leave the site relatively easily, that will take care of any deliveries or any pickup of, of material being removed from the site. We are also looking at putting, again, new pavement and curbing in the entire site. There will be some replacing, if, if you have familiar with the site, there are a number of existing utility poles and the areas that are sort of crosshatched are where the existing utility poles are, we're going to block those off so you don't run into them. But we're looking to replace the existing electric and telecommunications lines into the site, when they get to the end of site, they're going to be basically the last pole that will be taken into the building, have an underground situation. The little green area you see next to where the co-gen is going to be, there's going to be, they're replacing the old transformer with a new transformer, they're going to be putting in a, that sort of teardrop shape or partial teardrop shape, it's going to be an outdoor patio area, seating area for staff to take breaks. The design is going to either be a permeable paper material, so there's no runoff, or it might be a wood type structure, elevate a little bit above the ground, but again, the idea to minimize any increase in runoff from the site. The pavement we're putting underneath the co-gen facility, that increase in pavement is being mitigated by the removal of the pavement for the little water quality swell, so in fact, there's no increase in runoff from the site and, as I said, the, the water's going to be cleaned up a little bit. We are adding some minor things like bollards around the site, we are putting in, re-striping the parking, and so we're adding the handicap spaces that you can see next to the building. We are basically maintaining throughout the entire site, a width of all the new parking spaces of nine feet, which is the standard sized parking space, in some of the locations because of the limited existing pavement, will have a compact space of minimum of fifteen feet, some of these compact spaces, or modified compact spaces are going to be seventeen feet, on those areas will be redone and again, we're looking to basically reestablish a pavement that actually works for the site and picks up all the drainage. There'll be some wheel stops up against the building so the vehicles won't run into the building, the site's going to have some changes to the facade and some of the existing sidewalks are going to be redone and there'll also be maybe some windows of the doors being modified a bit. Other than that, it's a pretty straightforward, minimal type site work project, so be happy to answer any questions you might have.
If I may jump in for a second, this is Ravi Samavedham, I am the President of the company Azure Clean Rooms On Demand, which is the applicant. I think one key thing to mention here is a difference between this site that we're proposing versus a traditional biopharmaceutical manufacturing site, is that we do not have any drains in the facility, meaning the facility is designed for early phase clinical manufacturing with heavy reliance on single use technologies, everything is backed in, everything is backed out, so in terms of discharge, other than just the break room and, you know, hand washing areas in the bathrooms, there are no drains in the clean rooms, there's no water generation, there's no cleaning facilities for the equipment, there is no steam generation like you would see in a traditional biopharmaceutical setup. So in that respect, this is a very unique facility that actually does not exist. So that's the other thing that I want to point out, that this is an innovation that we're trying to bring to accelerate biopharmaceutical therapies, to get to the clinic and then eventually get to the market faster. I just wanted to throw that because it is, it is slightly different from, you know, some of our neighbors in that same vicinity that are biopharmaceutical companies.
Great. Very good, thank, thank you very much. Kristin, any, any, anything to add to that?
So the Azure is currently going through, as Christine Hung mentioned, the Board of Health as well as the Conservation Commission, so we'll be kind of working together and waiting for their comments as they come in for certain site modifications and then with the Board of Health as they're looking over the use. As Azure mentioned, they're a company where they oversee smaller companies coming in and using their space and for a period of time, from what Christine Crezier said, it wasn't, you know, a couple of months, it was, you know, six months, a year, but certainly I'm not the one to answer that if I'm speaking out of turn. So what, with the special permits that we'll be issuing is to Azure as kind of that management company of those individual tenants that come in to begin manufacturing, you know, their product, as they mentioned, you do the science, they'll do the other stuff. But with that said, it's very important to note that the Board of Health has a huge role in permitting all life science and biotech, but especially in an, an operation like this where you have kind of a, an umbrella company where you can bring in smaller companies to, to, to the small companies to, you know, be, hopefully become big companies. And to have, as we talk about a lot, you know, we want the four hundred thousand square foot life science company, but they had to start at a five hundred square foot life science company somewhere. And if we can, you know, bring that whole cycle into this, you know, this area Burlington, hopefully, it helps us grow into the spaces we have and, and begin to kind of transition still more into life science, so I think it's a perfect use to, to bookend what we've been trying to accomplish here in Burlington. But just wanted to make sure, make sure that it was understood, kind of the multi-layer permitting that's ongoing right now, and this is kind of the opening, we'll be looking to hear from the other departments and obviously have more to offer at the next meeting, I think based on the Board of Health schedule, I don't think they'll be probably able to offer us comments until later this month, so I think probably from a planning board action standpoint, it'll probably be looking at the first meeting in February, just in terms of timeline, but certainly can ask questions from the, this meeting, next meeting and, and that, that February meeting. So, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks Kristin. Do we have any departmental comments on this?
Sure, Joe, this is Liz and I have some departmental comments, I'm assuming applicant team, tell me if you've received these comments via, via viewpoint, that you guys are aware of them, but I'll read them into the record. Again, what was previously mentioned is that the, they are scheduled to appear before the Board of Health on the twelfth of January and the twenty sixth of January, so they won't have comments until our first meeting in February again, and then the Building Department, the, from Andy Ungerson in the Building Department, he would like to see the rooftop equipment enclosed or shielded, and he just wants to make sure that the handicap parking sidewalks and approach to the building are compliant with the Architectural Access Board rules and regs. So those are the only comments that we have thus far, but we, we are expecting to hear more from the Board of Health.
Okay, great.
And CONCON.
And CONCON, yep.
Yep, so Kristin, let me get it right, now each one of these, so we, you know, the process we're going through now is just for the, for the concept, each user doesn't then come back to us, they, they go back to the Board of Health?
So we'll have a kind of, as I mentioned, an umbrella special permit to cover these, these items and have, you know, specified limitations or kind of operations identified, but each user must go to the Board of Health as an individual user. And through that process, we'll be having confirmation to make sure that, or we'll be asking them to confirm that any new user coming in is still, falls under the, the special permits that we'll be issuing for Azure as the oversight company, but Azure, as men, as mentioned, will be dealing with hazardous material, storage, any, or, you know, any chemical storage, a lot of the things that we're issuing the special permit for the use is managed by Azure, so that we would typically be issuing those special permits to that, those who would be involved, as mentioned by, as mentioned, it was, you know, that they, they, everything comes in, everything leaves, there's nothing, there's no drains, there's no, nothing like that, so. But each individual user needs to go to the Board of Health and that's why it's so critical and their role within life science and especially a role like in this type of use.
Yep.
So if I may jump in, Ravi, here again, the analogy that we like to use is each one of our clients is a surgeon, right? The surgeon knows how to do the surgery, but they may not be experts in how to clean up the blood or to make sure that they have enough, you know, governing supplies or cleaning supplies stocked up, so in that analogy, Azure Group is the hospital staff that makes sure that the surgeon is successful, so each one of our clients is a surgeon that's doing a critical surgery and we are there to make sure that they are successful and we do that for multiple clients. If you take that analogy and, and you eliminate drains and, and water generation and, you know, all of the stuff that you see in traditional facilities, that's who we are, that's a site where the discharge is not going to be anything other than the non-science site, which is basically the break room and the bathrooms and so on, so I think that's the critical difference between traditional biopharma facilities and our facility.
Interesting analogy.
Thank you.
They don't clean it up the blood, but. Okay, so I think we're gonna, we're gonna go into, just briefly, any questions or comments from the board members, and we'll start, start with Paul.
Yes, this is a great catch for Burlington, because this is like the egg, fertilized egg that's going to, as it grows, hopefully locate in Burlington and, and these have, this is an analogy to when we first began with the engineering and the making chips and so forth. And the next thing you know, we have a park full of very high-tech people. And this, to me, this, this building is going to be like a self-contained unit. So anything other than the heat and bathrooms and stuff like that, anything that comes in is going to go out. It's not going to stay in Burlington. Their responsibility is the disposal of all that stuff and so forth. So it really is in its own way a very clean operation, but offers some really great possibilities for the town of Burlington, I think. That's, that's my comment.
Yep, I agree. That's, thank you, Paul. It's interesting. Okay, Ernie?
Yeah, a very interesting concept and it sounds like a really good fit for Burlington. I just had a couple of, a couple of my curiosity questions, maybe to Abby. So that, that's, that's the concept of no drains in any of the clean rooms. So that means you must have a lot of material that you store on site and you have a vendor take offsite and treat or whatever you have to do with it. How often, how often you, would you anticipate that vendor being there? And is it like a tank truck or how, how does that work? Just real brief, please.
We have third parties. I can give you some examples of Veolia, Steadis Cycle. Right now in Wall Time, the facility that has six clean rooms, we have a pickup every once a week. In Burlington, we expect twice a week of those companies coming and picking it up. And we have a designated waste storage area that is locked and access controlled. So we'll have a satellite storage area with, with all kinds of SOPs that we have in place that we had acquired by CGMPs, so yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure the Board of Health will have quite a bit to say about that and I know you work together with them. Good, right now that's, that's all I have until we hear from Board of Health and Conservation. Thank you, Joe.
Great, thanks, Ernie. Bill?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I had the same questions, you know, my concern again is, is the, the output of that, where you have different clients in there and how do you control that? So if you, you have a common waste area, so you'd have each individual client mixing their waste together? Or is it individual to the microenvironment?
So we will have a location that is locked and accessible only to certain personnel that are trained to handle waste. But yeah, it is the same location for multiple clients, but each one of their ways will be double bagged and its own container for it to be picked up by the third party.
So when your client, client has maybe a waste container that goes into a central location, so they've got to bag it up. I did have a question on the COGEN and maybe you can take that question back. What I understand the COGEN is that it's there for backup, but it's also for energy generation with natural gas. And so maybe you can, Frank, you can take that back to give me some details on that. So maybe what I understand that to be a natural gas generator, but I don't need the answer right now. So go back, come back with that one. This, so I kind of get this is kind of like a rental office type of thing. So you've got your microenvironments, each individual microenvironment would have its own hood perhaps over it and you're, you're surrounded by either plastic or glass or you're in your separate microenvironment for each particular section. Is that accurate?
That's right. So the twenty clean rooms in, in Burlington, the, the air is controlled in such a way that there's complete segregation from one clean room to another because that's what the GMPs require, that's what the FDA requires for any products going into humans. So, yeah.
Okay, maybe back to Frank. On this particular site, I've never been a big fan of the public coming in on the sides. I, I, I always would have liked to get a second bite at that and I've got it now. So maybe from, if I, again, enough of this meeting, but you can go back to take a look at the microenvironment, see, and this is a, a single floor from what I understand. So how many people would you have on the site maximum versus what you have for parking? Because I think if we can get rid of that parking that you've got coming in, that's just madness, the parking that you're coming in on each side. I think that's a, that's a real bad design. So if we can limit the parking up just to the front of the building and not have that parking on the stretch. So figure out, again, we've always talked about the bio groups having less people, right? So you need less parking. So let's see if we can kind of, we can help ourselves in that parking because heading parking on both sides is just, it's asking for trouble. And I always thought that was a really bad design. So that's for Frank, I don't need the answer right now. And then just, I guess my question is, if you're one-stop shopping, how do you know what material your client is bringing in? Do you buy the materials? Do you have, are you the purchasing department and you say, for everybody that's going to bring something and you have to buy it through us? So you know exactly what comes in? Or can they just bring it in a bag and go into the microenvironment?
So, you know, this is a CGMP manufacturing, right? So we have to adhere to 21 CFR part two, ten and two, eleven. So we have SOPs, you know, policies and procedures that everybody is trained to. So irrespective of who's bringing the material, the material cannot come in to the building unless it has what we call a material specification. That describes the part number, the lot number, where it's coming from, who the client is, what the storage conditions are, what the hazards are. Does it have a MSTAS associated with it? If it doesn't have it, it gets rejected, it goes back to origin.
So you're, you're the purchaser of everything that comes in from a material standpoint? Somebody can't bring anything in a bag? Is that right? You're the purchasing?
Exactly, yeah. And anybody who even enters the site requires a badge to enter. In, in order to get the badge, they have to get trained in all of these procedures. So, yeah.
Okay. And just the, let me just see what else is in the COGEN. I just put my little small writing here. We get the clean room, microenvironments. Okay, I think that's it for now. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Brenda?
I don't have anything additional to add. I look forward to receiving the comments from the Board of Health. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'm, I'm gonna hold off on my comments as well at this point. And I think we, now I think we want to look and see if there's anybody in the audience that has any comments or questions or anything.
Hi, Chairman Pemba, this is Brady. I do have a comment that I would like to read into the record from Jack Kelly. It's just a question about where is the snow storage on the site?
Good question.
Okay. Great. We have, one, one of you want to answer that or the applicant? Sure, we're gonna dump it into the wetlands, Jack. No, I think what we're gonna end up doing more realistically, what we're gonna end up doing is basically on the easterly side. So if you're coming in the driveway up the hill, the east is on your right, that's where Oracle is. We're gonna be assigning some of those spaces as snow storage in the future. We can mark that on the plan for the next hearing and we'll provide that information to you. Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience that has any questions or comments?
I am not seeing anyone.
Okay. And why don't we, we, can we get, I think if we're all set, can we get a motion to continue?
Joe, this is Bill. I'd like to give a motion to continue Mrs. Planning Board meeting of January 21st, 2021.
Second.
Motion second and roll call.
Vice Chairman Pemba?
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you to all. We'll get, we'll have the questions, answers to the questions at the, at the next hearing date. Thanks to all. Good night.
Good night, Brady.
Thank you for your time.
Chair, Pemba, Bill here. I'd like to make a motion to take items seven R through seven T together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All right, I moved and seconded, the roll call.
Vice Chairman Pemba?
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino? Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, where are we here? Bill, I'm having the same problem you're having with my eyes.
Joe, this is Kristen. Do you want me to summarize the?
Woo! Yeah, yeah, could you?
Yeah.
All right, Joe, okay.
So these are three applications. They're all for property located at forty-two, forty-four, Third Avenue. Light Force Orthodontics is the applicant. They're looking for three special permits. First pursuant to section twelve, one, five PD special permit of the zoning by law. Then special permits pursuant to section one, five, one light manufacturing or processing plants of the Northwest Park PDD. And section one, five, four hazardous and toxic material chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, the discharge of the Northwest Park PDD. That's it.
Great. Thanks, Kristin. All right, is the applicant here? We have the applicant?
We do, but we can't hear him, Joe.
Yeah, Shelton, I think you're muted.
Okay.
Okay, unmute now.
Still can't hear you.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear Alexander Ayers.
Yeah, sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about the technical difficulties.
It's okay, you haven't been the first. There's been a couple for some reason tonight.
Well, thank you for all the hardy souls that have stayed on the line here to, to hear our story. So my name is Robert Griffin, manager at Light Force Orthodontics. Have a number of other members online with us, including Alfred Griffin, the CEO, Iran Nadir, the Director of Operations, Alex Ayers, the Manufacturing Manager, and then Tyler Gload, our civil engineer with RJ O'Connell Associates. So by way of introduction, so Light Force Orthodontics is a additive manufacturer of ceramic custom orthodontic brackets that are designed to be used by the typical orthodontist to help move teeth more precisely and more quickly, which essentially decreases overall treatment time of a typical orthodontic case and provides for less visits with each patient. So we're currently located in Cambridge, Massachusetts, where we have about 4,000 square feet combined of office and light manufacturing space. We're, we're looking to move to the Burlington area, to this facility in order to expand both our engineering, administrative and support staff along with the manufacturing component. So in our space plan, it's divided approximately fifty percent towards general office space and then fifty percent towards the light manufacturing. The product is in widespread use with orthodontists now. It's FDA approved and this facility should help us meet all of our production demands along with putting the facility in an area that I think aligns with a lot of local businesses and allows us to recruit and retain a lot of top talent that will help us develop our engineering and technical expertise. So that is a basic overview of what we are and what we do. Are any specific questions or areas you would like us to expand upon?
This is Kristin. Do we have a site plan, just so we can orient folks to what building, or Brady, if you can pull up the site plan of what building? I know you guys aren't doing very much external work. And then just as Brady's bringing that up, overall, we have, we don't have any concern with this application. Have you guys concluded with, do you, actually no, yeah. Have you guys concluded with the Board of Health yet?
Yes, we received feedback from Christine Mathis, who we had discussed all of the chemicals that were being stored on site with. And based on the online platform, she looked like she approved and she said, yes, just fill out the hazardous materials registration form as you guys are moving into the facility. So I believe yes.
Okay. So with that, just for board members, you know, we have this policy with remote meetings since COVID began that we will not close anything on the first, on the first day it opens, just to make sure we had given enough time for public comment. But with that, I, I really, we don't have any concern, the Board of Health, if they've concluded. So I would expect that we'd be putting together a decision for our next meeting. So if members, as they weigh in, just if there's any other questions or information that you're looking for, you know, please let us know so we can incorporate those. But thank you. Actually, I have one question. So you're in Cambridge. Are you, and you said your product's in, or do you have a unique product that no one else has? Are you part of, I don't know. I was interested when you came to DCM about the product and kind of uniqueness of it and how it kind of changed orthodontics in general. And I, I, well, it's too late to tell a story, but I don't know if anyone remembers that, like the molding of the orthodontic molds that were like terrible and awful and that are now a thing of the past. And now I guess it's like a laser that they just measure your whole mouth and it's magical. So I, I don't know. I, I was impressed with your product and I thought it was interesting and, you know, I'm glad you're coming to Burlington.
Thank you. And, and yes, so we do have a unique product. We, we do have a patent on the use of the actual material for this application. And the material is uniquely appropriate for the mechanical forces that have to be exerted by the orthodontic wire onto the bracket. And I'll actually let Alex, who, who's our engineer, expand upon that a little bit, including on how we take the digital impressions.
Hey, guys. So basically, thanks to the beauty of additive manufacturing, we produce, we can digitally create someone's recreation of their mouth and have that in a computer and then create a orthodontic plan that fits exactly that person. And then because we are making these on demand one at a time for each patient, they're custom to the patient. And so it reduces waste and it just creates a better product for the person. We have a pretty basic process which involves 3D printing. And then the parts go through a furnace heating process to condense and solidify them. And all our processes, because we are a medical device, all our processes are documented and controlled and regulated by the FDA.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any departmental comments on this at all?
Sure. So again, I think it was previously mentioned, the Board of Health just had one comment for them that they hazardous materials. I think when they're, you know, if, when they're doing their redevelopment, interior redevelopment of the building. But the only other comment we have is from Captain Hannafin with the Fire Department. He just wants to make sure that they get a flammable storage permit from the Fire Department. But other than that, we don't, we don't have anything major comments outside the norm.
Okay, great. Any board members' comments? Paul?
I, no, but I, I would be really excited. It looks to me like this is complete and it's just because we said we weren't going to prove something that we haven't. But I sometimes break my own resolutions and I would feel excited if we actually voted this. And, and so they wouldn't have to come back and we wouldn't have to see it again. Because it, it looks to me to be fairly simple. I know that it's rather expensive because it, I think this is what one of my family members had happened recently. She talked about the moving teeth and so forth. And, but, you know, that's just my comment. If they must come back, they must come back, but I'm satisfied that this is a pretty complete application. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Ernie?
Nope, all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ernie. Bill?
Yeah, no comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Bill and Brenda.
No, no comment. You know, like Kristin, I do remember that god-awful gout that you had to clean your mouth with. Uh, no, no comment. Um, you know, like Kristen, I do remember that god-awful gauk that you had to clean your mouth with. I, I, I remember that like it was yesterday, unfortunately, so I think that this is a delightful product. Um, you know, hopefully my kids don't need braces, but if they do, great. Um, and, you know, like the other board members, uh, you know, I think it's pretty straightforward and, and I'd be happy to vote on this, uh, this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Brenda. Um, Kristen, is that, do we entertain voting on it tonight, or is that something we just, uh?
Um, you, you could, uh, well, we don't have motions drafted for you nor a decision, um, which isn't necessarily fatal, but you usually like to have something in front of you. Um, what we can try to do is at the next meeting, um, you know, if, if really we can reach out to the other two members who, um, will obviously read themselves into this, um, and if they have any questions, if you guys are open to, um, being available, we can, um, try to figure out what those might be, so you don't need to bring your entire team, um, to the next meeting, and we can try to put you up front and, um, kind of not have you be here until thirteen PM, um, at the meeting. If, if all the members are good to go, we can just, you know, get it done.
Yeah, I mean, given the fact that it's remote, it's really not as big of an issue than if they had to show up at a meeting, you know, so. I think, uh, and like you said, they, they can have a skeleton crew on the next go-around, and, uh, I, I think, I think that's probably the best, the best way to handle it would be to, uh, wait until we have the, the proper, uh, motions.
Yeah, well, just being down to the person without the motions, um, just because your policy is the two-meeting policy. Um,
Right.
I just wanna second with them, but we can make this easy and painless by the next time around, on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Painless dentistry?
Painless dentistry, right?
It, it's associated with painless dentistry, absolutely.
All right, so, uh, a motion? Uh, to continue matters of planning.
Uh, by the Board meeting of January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
They moved and seconded, roll call?
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you, guys. Be in touch.
See you next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is, uh,
You.
Item you, yeah. It's a, uh, public hearing on petition to amend the zoning bylaws, Article Two, definitions, Article Three, districts, Article Four, use regulations, Article Five, dimensional requirements, Article Six, non-conforming uses and structures, Article Seven, general regulations, Article Eight, overlay district, Article Nine, administration and procedures, Article Ten, miscellaneous and special regulations, Article Eleven, uh, special residential, uh, s- special residential regulations, Article Twelve, planned development districts to address housekeeping matters submitted by the planning board. Do we have any?
Yep, Joe. So, um, as we discussed previously, um, having, well, it's January, and January zoning's up first. You don't want to miss the chance to do something. Um, we had initially, um, thought we were gonna do this as well as wireless, wireless was not, it didn't, anyway, that, that's not going forward. Um, so what this is, so, um, trying to just get my, um, the warrant up quickly, but I can't, I, I can't find it quickly. But, um, so what this is, is really clarifying, um, certain items that have, there's been consistent confusion. Um, having consistency in the kind of how we're organizing information. In Article Two, we go out like seventeen decimal points, well, not really, but like five or six, um, which is, everything's not alphabetical anymore. We thought it was a great idea, and then ten years later, it wasn't. Um, so what we're doing with Article Two is alphabetizing and having everything be, so Article Two is set up for its two-point-one to two-point-twenty-six. So A is two-point-one, B is two-point-two, and everything within that section is alphabetical. Um, Article Four, there were some references that we started putting in where there's additional use regulations, um, in other sections, and we'd put footnotes in there. We only, we did that for some, we didn't do it for others. Oh, perfect, oh, oh, perfect, what I'm looking for. So, um, we corrected spelling and formatting throughout the zoning bylaw, which was a mess, and I think Liz came in and said, who put this together? And, you know, being the one who was reorganizing it in two thousand and ten, I have to say, well, you know, I didn't redo everything, but, because we didn't want to change too much when we reorganized, but, um, there was a lot of inconsistency in formatting. Um, and, uh, and references, um, there was some references in, um, articles about, um, stormwater and low-impact design that were inconsistent, um, as well as references to state agencies that don't exist anymore, such as the MDC, so we looked at that. And then in Article Twelve, the planned development districts, um, the biggest change there was that we added length, or we modified Article Nine for electronic permitting and administrative, administration and procedures, that same language, um, from Article, anyway, to, there's language in Article Twelve that didn't address electronic permitting that we, we are fixing there, um, and that's, that's it. Um, it's, it's a lot of little things, but, um, and I think Sherry's still on the line, and she can, um, we've had a lot of comments about how we wanna, I don't know, should words be hyphenated, not hyphenated?
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of kind of, all of that punctuation, spelling, all that stuff. I kind of feel like there's been so many cooks in this kitchen with all the different planning directors and people helping out. We have three, you know, we have three town meetings a year, and we're always rushing to get things to the next town meeting, because it's always, you know, it creeps up on you last minute, so this is kind of, that's how I feel. We're kind of finally just like, let's do this one round and get it all under control, and then, uh, we'll be in better shape, um, for the next time. We, yeah, we've been doing a lot of work with, um, Sherry and the zoning bylaw review committee about, um, the processes and how to make sure this gets through, um, easily, um, and we've been, they've been super helpful.
Yeah, and zoning bylaw review has also put together a style guide, um, pre, like, they actually put together a year, two years ago, um, and, and really having some consistency, um, in for, in, in formatting and how we're saying things. So no, nothing substantive, just really keeping some things consistent, which they're not right now, so. So that's housekeeping, and we would ask that the board vote on this matter this evening, so we can have time to prepare the motions for the, um, for the distribution of the town meeting warrant.
All right, we have any, uh, comments from the board members? I'm not even gonna break it down individually. Does anyone have any comments on it?
This is Paul. Uh, this is what I call a trust-me article. So, if you think I'm gonna get through this, you know, I'm not, so I trust you, and I'm gonna vote favorably on it.
Thank you, Paul. That's very nice of you.
Paul just wants to get, he wants to be done by eleven, so you're, you're gonna fall asleep.
I second Paul's motion in that matter.
All right, so let, let, I'll make the motion the Planning Board recommends favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Two, definitions, Article Three, districts, Article Four, use regulations, Article Five, dimensional requirements, Article Six, non-conforming uses and structures, Article Seven, reg, uh, general regulations, Article Eight, overlay districts, Article Nine, administration and procedures, Article Ten, miscellaneous and special regulations, Article Eleven, special residential resi, regulations, and Article Twelve, planned development districts to address housekeeping matters.
I think we, uh, can I make a motion first to close the public hearing?
Oh, do we need, do we need to then, okay?
Oh, thank you. Thanks, Ernie. You may, Ernie.
Second.
Okay, roll call to close the hearing. Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll second, I'll second, uh, Bill's motion, too.
Thank you, Ernie.
Thanks. Roll call.
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right, great. We will, uh, let's see.
One more.
We're on to, uh, V, we're on to, uh, V, public hearing. Petition to amend the zoning bylaw to address a change in name from the Board of Selectmen to Select Board, submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
Um, so I can, the only thing I have to say about it is that it's, um, uh, find and replace, um, effort in the board, in the zoning bylaw, to just replace Board of Selectmen with Select Board.
Uh, what, they can be called whatever they want to be called, doesn't matter to me.
Well, it's just to ask, uh, is that one word or two words, or hyphenated? It's gonna be two words?
Y- yes.
Yes. Yes, Sherry.
Yeah.
No, uh, Town Council wrote this, so I hope it's correct.
Thank you.
Uh-oh, two words. Get me.
Just motion to close the public.
They want to.
Second.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing, roll call. So Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Gaffney here, motion to, uh, the Planning Board recommends favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaw to address a change in name from the Board of Selectmen to Select Board submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Member, Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yep.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. Next item is, oh, we got, uh, other matters, is that correct? Is that, is that the last?
Well, we have the, the meeting minutes are next, Joe, so you're gonna vote on the meeting minutes of November nineteenth. And that's in another matter.
Yep, minutes, okay, yep.
Your bottom page ten, Joe, says nine minutes.
Do we approve these together?
Okay, uh, yeah, why don't you pick?
You can, if you have enough, did everyone read them?
I did not.
Yes.
Yes.
Wait, so we, we gotta, we gotta, we have a skeleton board tonight, anyway, do we have?
Right, how many, how many, if you only have three people that are gonna vote in favor, I'd prefer to just table them.
Yeah, let's, let's table it.
Okay.
Let's table it, yep. All right.
Do you need a motion to table, motion to table approval minutes until next meeting?
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
Move the seconded.
Um, Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
All right, so now we're on to other matters, correct?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Discussion.
Discussion on the warrant article for Dartmouth Road cul-de-sac discontinuance.
Sure, so, yeah, perfect. Uh, I was looking for Brady to put up. Um, so this is the portion that we've been talking about quite a bit, that's been brought up quite a bit, the old cul-de-sac in front of Tony Monarazzo's house and Lot Four, or not Lot Four, but Four Dartmouth. Um, so this is the sketch plan. We will have a civil plan that will be prepared. Um, but this is rough, you know, generally what you're looking at in terms of taking Dartmouth, um, removing the cul-de-sac, conveying that property back to those two lots. Um, there is some area that will still be under, um, easement, which will, you'll see on the civil plan, but, um, because we don't have an official street map in Burlington, the Planning Board needs to weigh in on these changes prior to going to town meeting, and then the selectmen after town meeting will actually accept the change. So this is just that you support what, um, this action to, to town meeting.
Right.
If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer it, but that's.
Yep, and I believe that, uh, that plan was run by, uh, Tony Monarazzo, was that right, now?
Yeah, Tony Monarazzo has a copy of the plan. It's what he had hoped for, um, in layout.
Yeah.
We were the ones who did, we submitted it, um, the planning department submitted this. Um, we wanted to submit it to kind of jumpstart that conversation about, um, Lot Four, um, where it was if the lot could be reconfigured, um, then they, they would most likely be looking at new house construction versus kind of rehab the house that's there, which is kind of awkward, so it just, you know, if we can do anything to move that forward, and at the discussion with the subdivision, you guys had said, you know, we'll do what we can to try to move that forward, so that's what, that's why it's here.
Very good, and I think, uh, I think we had a comment, I think we had, uh, some feedback from Tony that he was fine, he, that was exactly what he was looking for, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's not final, so this is just a recommendation to the Planning Board to town meeting, and then town meeting will vote, and then the selectmen have to vote after that, so there's a couple more steps before it's finalized, and there'll be, and we, there, uh, Steve Dresser's working on a civil plan with, um, to, so we can formalize the, for the filing.
Sounds good. Do we have a motion here?
I have, Joe, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I had a question if I could. Yeah, sorry about that, Joe. Uh, question for, for Kristen, I guess, uh, three questions, actually, really short questions. Uh, does that make, uh, a lot, does that make the, does that make that lot over forty thousand square feet, number one? Do we know?
I don't think so, but I don't have the exact square footage yet, because I'm waiting.
Okay, it doesn't look like it does. Uh, and, and does the pavement get removed, or does, does the land get conveyed with the pavement, and then it's up to the new property owner to remove it?
So most of the pavement's already removed. Um, if you remember, when we were discussing three and five, there was issues of ponding, so there's requirements to do some grading and un-mounding kind of of earth in some of those locations, which, which needs to be done by waypoint, so we, it would be such that, um, when the selectmen take action, it would be, I think, is when we would have conditions upon, uh, that, you know, what they need to do. But I mean, none of this, the conveyance, well, I guess, on Tony Monarazzo's property is the property, because it's not within the subdivision. On Lot B, it's still held within the subdivision, still held under the covenant, so we still maintain a lot of control in that piece, or not, you know, enough control, but, um, we do want to resolve any of those existing issues that we've identified, um, with that kind of mounding and pooling, and also the, uh, any movement, necessary movement of utilities, such as the, um, utility pole that's still up, that needs to come down.
Right, right, okay, and, and does?
All that stuff, um, that's a good question, and, um, I, I, I think we need to just figure out where that will sit in terms of this process.
Okay, one other really brief question, I, the, the cul-de-sac is being abandoned, obviously, on the other side of the cul-de-sac, um, does, there doesn't appear to be enough property to worry about, correct? See what I'm saying? In other words, the road? Will the pavement still follow the cul-de-sac on the other side?
Like the other side of the ball of the cul-de-sac?
Oh.
Yeah, direct, directly across.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Does anything happen with that? I know it's a minor piece of property, but it's still?
No, it's a good question. I, I, I've been so focused on Tony Monarazzo in Lot Four.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I understand, understand.
It's a good question, and I, I don't, I, you know, I can ask Council if it's something that can still be amended. We've already sent this piece to the warrant, so. Um, I don't know, but we can do it at a later date. We'll, we'll see.
Okay, thank you. All set, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Good question.
Okay.
Alright, do we need to open this up to pu- public or close it? Are we good to go?
It's just a discussion item that you guys are just required by statute if we don't have a street uh street.
Street map.
Street map.
Let me uh.
An accepted street map that you need to weigh in.
Alright, so uh I'll make the motion. Can I jump in for a second?
Of course, hey, I'm Mr. Uh, what's your name?
Can I speak for a second? Because I re- I remember this, I I think Ernie's question to the other side is because there's a sidewalk there, you're leaving it as is.
Ah, maybe you're right. Yeah, probably right, Jack.
Yeah, that, I wouldn't. Yeah, you're right. I'm not changing the sidewalk.
Yeah, and I think there's a sidewalk there, so you're leaving it alone.
Yeah, you're probably right. Okay.
Okay.
I have a question. If I vote for this, does that mean it goes away and I never see it again?
Well, I don't know.
No.
This, this whole project is like small pieces and you just have to get through each one and but this solves some issues that, yes, it gets you closer to that goal.
Yes.
This is like getting your teeth moved, which we did previously.
If you vote for it, Paul, if you vote for it, we can get you to bed by 11:00.
So let me make a motion. Uh this is a motion, the planning board supports the discontinuance and abandon uh that portion of Dartmouth Road as shown on the redline plan General Walker Estates, Terrafirma Lane, Burlington, Mass, prepared by Dressers Williams and Way Incorporated dated January seventeenth, 2017 redline to December tenth, 2020, to further revise by Dressers Williams and Way prior to filing at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. Said original plan filed to Middlesex uh South Registry of Deeds on March eighth, 2017, as Plan Two Thirty of twenty seventeen, which parcels for discontinuance and abandoned are shown as Lot A and Lot B and therefore, and thereafter, that the use of therefore is changed from municipal use to the, to, for the purpose of conveyance and thereafter authorized the Board of Selectmen to convey Lot A to the owner of property located at Two Dartmouth Road parcel twenty-one dash one eighty-eight dash zero and the Lot B to the owner of Four Dartmouth Road parcel twenty-one dash one eighty-nine, including any and all utilities located therein.
Second.
And thereafter.
Amen.
Alright.
Sorry, it's a lot of legalities in that one.
Roll call, Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
The motion is. It's done.
Good, okay. Okay, one more. Well, and then, then the chairman.
We have uh.
You ready for the planning board thereby grants a one-year extension from time from December fifth, 2020 to December fifth, 2021 to complete the required site plan improvements to construct twenty-two thousand plus minus square square foot, two-story commercial retail building with associated site and utility improvements as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated January fourth, 2021.
And said location being One Wheeler Road.
Yeah, so it's the old gateway building.
Yep.
Second.
Alright.
Second, okay, Liz.
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So move.
So we have uh final items. You have Corus Harmon, reports from Town Council, subcommittee reports, unfinished business, due business. Anybody have any of those items?
Everybody's shaking their head no, Joe.
Motion to adjourn.
So uh, is Bill motion to adjourn second?
Uh Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Sure, yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes, nice job, Joe. Thanks for getting us uh out before midnight. I definitely thought we were gonna be here all night.
Hey, good night, Paul. Great job.
Yeah, come on back on the twenty-first.
It's good to see you, Jack. Yeah, great to see you, Jack.
Take care, Jack.
Come back on the twenty-first, Jack.
Good job, Member in Pemba.
Thank you. Thank you. I I did it, Paul, with some time to spare.
Yeah, I did. You did. I'm still awake.
Alright, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.